Would the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
And Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening, we have Father Terry Hedrick from Church of the Resurrection on 37th Street to lead us in prayer. Father Hedrick.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, again, as we gather, as the City Council of Bel Air gathers, we begin this meeting by looking to you in the name of your Son, Jesus. We thank you for the promise that when we look to you, in Jesus' name, that you are present with us now by your Holy Spirit. So we continue to give you thanks, that you are a good and gracious God, abounding in mercy and steadfast love. We pray specifically this night for the city of Bel Air, especially for Mayor Jim Benage, the City Council members, and all the leaders of this community, especially for our first responders, law enforcement, EMS, and firefighters. Tonight, we pray that you will reveal to the City Council the knowledge of your will in all wisdom and spiritual understanding, in order that they may be fruitful in their service. Anoint them with the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose for the common good, they may faithfully serve in the offices to promote the well-being of all people in the Bel Air community. Grant that they may love mercy, do justice, and walk humbly with you. Now, we ask all of these things in the strong and wonderful name of our Savior, Jesus, who lives and reigns with you, Heavenly Father, and the Holy Spirit, our Advocate and Guide. We bless you, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Move on to item five, determine agenda additions. Are there any additions to the agenda to consider? Here none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This contains several items. If you would like anything removed from the consent agenda, please request that, and I can add it to the regular agenda. Included in the minutes are the June 7th regular council meeting, as well as the June 4th special council meeting. Petition for chapel landing and homestead senior landing. And Ann is here to answer brief questions concerning those petitions. There are several resolutions approving project financing in chapel landing and homestead senior landing. And Kevin Cowan, Gilmore and Ballot is here to answer questions on these items. So these should be short discussions. If you want a more involved discussion, we should move into the regular agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. Any discussion? Here none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Move on to discussions and approval of appropriations ordinance. So this reporting period includes one payroll period and $248,707 expense to Aegion for sewer lining project in Pearson's addition, as well as bond interest payments and bonded projects totaling $168,696. Any questions of staff? Here none, I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 22-11.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Here none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. So it's time for city requested appearances, and we have none. So we'll move on to citizens' concerns, and I have a request to speak from Carol Russell. Ms. Russell? And will I, please identify your name and address, and we'll allow you.
Sure, sure. My name is Carol Russell. I live at 6218 East 45th Street North. I'm speaking about item B, about the relocation of the fireworks tent that's been relocated right next to my home. I noticed that it did say the location was on the corner, northwest corner of 45th and Woodlawn. It's actually the second lot in. It's not on the corner. The gravel base and the tent have both been placed on this second lot in. I did talk to Justin and the mayor about this on Saturday, and I'm sorry I didn't get the gal that was from the Lions Club that was there. She did look at that. Okay, I'm sorry I didn't get your name. But we were talking about the march permit, and we thought that it might have been changed since then, and we decided it had not. I'm concerned about this structure being so close to my home. And we had a guy come out. You said Jay? I'm looking at my husband. You talked to him, okay? Jay came out to the house, and he said that it was within this range, but he didn't measure from our fence. He measured from the corner of my home and said on my property. So that measurement is off. I really and truly think that that's way too close to our home, and if you had that close to your home, I'm sure you'd be concerned. I'm asking you to go by rule of thumb. If you had that next to your home, would you want that tent and that gravel parking next to your house? Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't know of any questions, just a comment. We did look at the platting of that, and it is to be 61 feet from your home to the tent, and I believe that was confirmed this afternoon by Mr. Cook, Jay Cook.
Correct. Yes, they measured from our home, not from the fence.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And as I understand it, and I'm no expert in this, but I did do a little research on it and found that most fire codes seem to be recommending at the minimum of 40 feet. So I think you're within the 40-foot minimum that they're recommending. I don't think our code says anything about it. I don't recall, anyway. I couldn't find it.
I'm sorry you said you couldn't find. I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I couldn't find in our code that we specified a minimum distance, but is, fire, most fire codes that I did find, had found one in Fresno, California, that said 40 foot was the minimum distance from other structures for those, for those kind of type of facilities. So.
From Fresno, California? Is that what you said?
Yeah, in Fresno, California.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's Fresno, California. I'm sorry if I'm not speaking loud enough.
I didn't think I had a hearing problem. Maybe I do.
So, so that's, I think the consensus was that we, we did take reasonable precaution there and are, with our city staff, that they did make sure that the layout was appropriate for, for what was being done there. And I understand it sounds a little bit close, but that's what I'm hearing, is that that's, that's what the codes are out there. So if somebody has better information, then I'd be willing to hear that. But I think that what we're, we're requesting is that the fire marshal approve that before it get a, get a final permit. So I don't know that that's been done yet. Is that correct?
Correct. Mr. Mayor, we rely on the fire department to come in and check those structures to make sure the distance from property is appropriate, because state, the state steps in when you start dealing with fireworks and codes and temporary structures. So the fire, the local fire chief is in charge of that, and the recommendation before council today is to approve with the condition that it only be approved if it satisfies the condition of the fire department.
Thank you. So I, that's, that's what I know today, and we'll, I'm sure council will have some discussion here a little bit about it as well.
So when will we know? When will the homeowner that's right next door to that place know what's going on with that?
Well, the council will vote on it tonight. If the council approves it, then it'll be up to the fire department, and I don't know when, what, what transaction would happen from there. If you, if, if you know, then.
We know that they would, sales start on the 27th, so we anticipate that the fire department would be working on their approval process in the next week. We can have staff reach out to the neighbors and let them know.
All right.
Okay, so you'll reach out to us and let us know?
I think she's asking that the staff would let, ask the fire department to, if I understand you right.
Right, I'll, I'll request that our staff reach out as soon as we know, within a reasonable amount of time, call and let you know as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just had one question for Ms. Russell. Just one question. Just, just going into our discussion here later when we vote on it, is your, is your only concern the closeness being the, the fire concern? Because I know we, we talked on Saturday, there have been people in the neighborhood who have lost their home to fireworks. Is, is it the parking issue as well, or mainly the fire concern?
Yeah, they will be blocking our drive, and they'll, I have an elderly father that lives there, and I'm gonna have to deal with that and dogs. And we have had a person have their home totally lost due to fireworks. And the grass is really high back there, so that's just a tinderbox for that.
That, that is another issue I did ask, and I think code enforcement did send out some notices about the tall grass to get that addressed. So hopefully that will be addressed before, before they start sales. But they're not allowed to shoot off fireworks on that, on those premises anyway. That's, that's definitely against the law, right?
What did you say?
I'm sorry. So we did, we did send out notice, code enforcement did send out notice about the tall grass.
Okay, to the landowner? Okay.
Yes, and we appreciate your letting us know about that and let, so that concern. That was very appropriate. And so we did send out notice about that, and I understand code enforcement did that.
Okay.
May, probably yesterday. But.
Okay.
And the other thing, it is illegal for anyone to shoot off fireworks at that location.
Correct, and we had talked on, I know everyone wasn't there, but we had talked about that on Saturday, about that's the lowest priority. Fireworks is the lowest priority of a call.
Yeah, I, I understand it doesn't get high priority. You're right. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any other citizens that wish to speak this evening? If not, we'll move on to council member reports. Ms. Hamburg, do you have a report?
I had the privilege of joining you at, and Mayor, Councilman Smith on Saturday. I appreciated the opportunity to, to speak with citizens for the first time after being appointed, and just encourage citizens to take advantage of those opportunities, or email us, or call us. We always need to, need to hear from you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Welch.
No report.
Mr. Smith.
I also have no report, thank you.
Mr. David.
Just a, one thing. My son and I had the privilege of playing at the new Bel Air disc golf course. Played over lunch, nine holes, and it's a really nice little outing, little addition for Bel Air. So thank you, Lions Club and the city of Bel Air for putting that on.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Dean.
I do have a few things to, to note. First, first I wanted to thank the other applicants for the open seat that I've filled, and mayor, staff, and other council members. I look forward to helping work on the council to serve our community and continue to improve Bel Air. Also, I was able to attend the Bel Air Chamber meeting, as you were, earlier in the month. I was really encouraged. The report they gave of the membership growth there went from eight to 24 members, so certainly a great trajectory. So continue to spread the word, please, to all the businesses about getting engaged with the chamber. Also, I wanted to make sure the council is aware, and I greatly appreciated the opportunity to serve the community the last few years on the Utility Advisory Committee, but due to my new commitment, serving the city, I felt it appropriate to resign. So I did submit that letter of resignation at my last UAC meeting earlier this month, and also submitted that with the city clerk. So one other thing I thought was kind of interesting, and Mayor might expand upon this during his report, is very related to Bel Air and K254 corridor and regionally, is the, what they're calling the Kansas Infrastructure Summit, which will be held July 13th and 14th. I've registered. I do plan on attending. I believe Mayor does as well. A gathering really for cities and counties and private sector to, to learn more about the bipartisan infrastructure law and how that's gonna be implemented. And then the last thing I wanted to add was, I wanted to thank the Bel Air Rec Center. They continue to do great things. Our daughters have enjoyed playing indoor soccer, spring baseball here, even though we had a game canceled tonight, and our oldest has attended the summer day camp and really enjoyed it. So thanks for everything that Bel Air Rec does to help improve our community. That's all I've got.
Very good, thank you. Move on to Mayor's report. So I attended the UAC media, Utility Advisory Committee meeting on June 8th as well, and I won't repeat about Mr. Dean resigning, but to elaborate on that, so we do have an opening on that board now, and if anyone would, is interested in serving Utility Advisory Committee, they should complete the volunteer application found on the Bel Air website. On June 14th, I attended the WAMPO Transportation Policy Body Meeting, and it was noted at that meeting that there will be an open house on June 29th from 4:00 to 6:30 PM at the Advanced Learning Library, which is Wichita's new downtown library. This open house is an opportunity for citizens to learn more about the work done by WAMPO. On the North Junction Project, Mr. Tom Hines stated that they expect more weekend closures as they install more steel beams for the flyover interchange ramps. And I saw on the news this evening that they will be closing sections of those ramps the next couple days for some unloading of trucks. And so I asked about that steel, steel supports currently on the west end of the most recent beams installed, because it doesn't look like it's appropriately secured, and they said, well, the intention is that they're gonna fill that in with dirt, but, backfill it with dirt, but they can't do that right now, because that southbound and westbound ramp is in the way. And once the new southbound, westbound ramp is completed, that dirt work can be done. So that's why it's just steel beam structures there. WAMPO website has been redesigned. Everything that was there before should still be there, so just, just in a different location. So if you access that, feel free to do that. Then on Saturday, June 18th, I did held the coffee with the mayor, as council member Justin Smith and Emily Hamburg said. So two, we did have five citizens show up, two who attended, had just moved back to Bel Air and wanted to know more about our big picture plans, two just wanted to chat and get to know us a little better, and that was always good. And then Ms. Russell was there to speak about her concerns with fireworks stand, and we had some, we learned some good things there. So I appreciate her coming and telling us what she was concerned with. So at that, and I, well, I may do another one of these in the fall, probably not until the fall, though. So at that, I'll ask for city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind everybody that this is our last meeting before fireworks can be displayed in Bel Air, and the reminder is that since fire, since the Fourth of July is on a Monday this year, the cutoff for detonating fireworks on private property is 11:00 PM, and any debris has to be cleaned up by 10:00 PM on July 5th. And that's including debris in the public right of way as well. There are positive and negative feelings about fireworks. Our code does have penalty of up to $500 for violations of the fireworks code. Generally, police try to educate and use information, but that penalty is there as Also, we had a meeting this week about merging and codifying our code, so our residents can go online and search our code for any matter, just by doing a simple word search. Our company that we've been partnering with, Ranson, has been working on the, the background steps of all that, and they anticipate presenting a draft to the city in the next couple of weeks. So staff will test that and make sure it's good, and then we anticipate that in August, Ranson will be able to present to council, and then hopefully by the fall, September, they'll be able to publish the website. So if council approves, the public will have access to our codes much more easily. So we are moving along on that, just waiting on Ranson to do their, their technical pieces. Heard today from the Attorney General, they sent out the draft distribution amounts for cities on the opioid settlement, because the city declined to individually sue for opioids. We were all collectively working together to pursue the issue, and the AG today sent out their recommendation that the cities will get 25% of the first bit of settlement, and then over the next few months, we should be able to get more. So we anticipate that being released, the Attorney General would like to release that. It turns out to be about $2,500 or a little bit more for a city of our size. That'll be the first one, and they anticipate a few more over the next few months. And finally, want to let you know that me and Mr. Sutherland and I had a chance to, to meet and talk through the issue of how the city might choose to limit traffic or enforce no parking on certain private streets, and we were able to agree the best way to do it in this case may be for the city to consider passing an ordinance. Once the developers agreement's all done, the city can merely pass an ordinance just based on the fire department's recommendation that parking on that street is not safe. So we can add it to the few, there's like four other streets that the city does not allow parking on. So we, this, if the council desires, it, that would be a way to address this matter. So that's all I have.
Very good, thank you. And Mr. Lasher.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recognize our city clerk, Melissa. She was awarded the designation of Certified Municipal Clerk from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. She completed 120 hours of educational programs through the Municipal Finance Officer Association of Wichita State, and it took probably three years or so to complete that. And just to put that in perspective, there are only 142 certified municipal clerks in Kansas, and there are 630 cities, and each city has a city clerk. So I'd like to congratulate her for getting that certification. And as our city attorney stated, July 4th will be before our next council meeting, so City Hall will be, or City Office will be closed on that Monday, but we'll be back on the 5th for council meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
I always appreciate staff getting these certificates like a city clerk has gotten. I've earned several of those in my career, and they do enhance your, your breadth of knowledge. That's very good, thank you. Moving on to item 11A. So this, this item of, was one of four items I tabled from the meeting of June 7th, as we were running very late. The tree board has two remaining positions vacant. I received an application from Jesse Miller, who recently moved to Bel Air and is, and is interested in serving on the tree board. I, as well as tree board president Gary Northwall, spoke with Jesse regarding this position. I'd like to appoint Jesse to the tree board, with his term expiring in June of 2026.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Jesse Miller to the Bel Air Tree Board.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Welch. Any discussion? Here none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Point is confirmed, five to zero. And then item B, I asked for this item to be removed from the consent agenda and added it to the, as a separate action. Homeowner directly to the west, which we heard from Ms. Russell this evening, visits me in my coffee on Saturday. The Lena Fireworks received approvals for fireworks and sales permit this year, based on the previous location south of Dollar General. Due to that spot, that lot being staging area for woodland construction, they needed a new spot for 2022. After looking at several locations, they were able to acquire a lease on the northwest corner of 45th and Woodlawn, and I guess it's actually the lot west of that. And staff reviewed the, the new lot and added a few restrictions. Since the location on this application has changed, council needs to approve the new location. Any questions of our city attorney?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
If, if the fire department were to approve that, is there certain insurance coverages that commercial entities like them would need to carry in the case of an accident?
There, there are, and I'll ask the city attorney to elaborate on what they are. We do have those requirements out there.
Yes, they are. The original application required them to carry, to name the city as secondary insured, and then I think it's a million dollars, but I just want to check real quick on the amount.
I think this one's $500,000, but please check. I think this one's 500,000, but please check. I think the million was the, you're doing your own fireworks display.
Okay. Okay, 500,000 per occurrence.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welch.
I'd like to know why it took so long to get to this point that we're just now discussing this like a week before they open. At the time they applied, we even asked if they were going to be able to use that lot. I distinctly remember us talking about that because we knew the Woodlawn project was coming up. They knew the Woodlawn project was coming up. Why is this an emergency is what I'm asking?
My understanding is that they, the, Beleno, the company delayed because they're not local, they were not able to come down and assess the real feasibility of using the lot that they were approved for. So once they were able to assess the feasibility and see that the Woodlawn progress wasn't going to get out of the way, that they, they really, they began kind of looking at other alternatives. From the city side, the city, because the Woodlawn project is a city project, tried to redirect and accommodate. We knew this was a alliance fire, you know, a local organization. And so the city tried to give them some options to accommodate. By the time they chose an option and had a site plan ready for review and all the documents in order, that forced us to this meeting.
And what other sites did they consider? Did they consider the lot to the east or the one at 45th and Rock?
Yeah, so we gave them several locations. The opposite corner there where Catholic Care sits, that was another option. 45th and Rock, we gave them that one. I think we mentioned 45th and Oliver, 45th and Webb. We just, you know, they, to follow up on what Jackie was saying, we, we received an email on May 24th from Beleno who said that they realized that they couldn't use that lot. Now, why it took them that long to figure out they couldn't use the lot, don't have a clue. And then we, we gave, so they asked what other locations. We gave them a bunch of different locations. Again, it's up to them to contact the landowner and see if they'd be interested in leasing space. And then on June 6th is when we received the map of this location, and they stated that they were able to negotiate a lease with whoever owns that lot there. So that's kind of a timeframe on our side.
Okay, I see this as a serious oversight on their part, and I don't feel real generous towards them.
I will add that they, the minimum they had to provide for insurance is 500,000, but they did provide a million or more for certain incidences, so.
And the other thing, I, I don't believe this is actually a Lions Club tent. I think Lions Club subcontracts out to somebody else to actually run the tent.
Yeah, so there's, the way I understand it, there's two, well, do you, do you know, Emily, the details?
There's an ordinance that requires them to donate a certain amount of money to a local club, so, to a local nonprofit organization. So they have to find somebody, and then we have the option of helping staff it and get more money, or choose not to staff it and get a lesser amount donated to us. But it's an ordinance that requires them to have a club sponsoring them so they can actually open for business here.
And last year, I did not see any Lions Club members there. So I'm calling this a Lions Club project to stretch it, in my opinion.
It's a, it's a good moneymaker for us, but because of the size and, put politely, higher age of the, of the membership, we've just chosen not to, you know, to take the lesser amount and let them staff it.
I understand it's a hardship for the people as they get older to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
Just exploring all options. I saw the tent go up last week or week before last. How, I mean, we're five or six days out. How feasible would it be to look at some of these other sites? Since the homeowner has a serious concern right next to it?
I know that city staff had concerns about several of the sites. I don't know if after city site, city staff reviewed all the sites, there would be any other left that would work. So I don't know if Ty has more information on that, but staff's review, this, this was the one that could actually work. I'm sorry, of the ones they would consider. So we gave them a list, they narrowed it down, and this was the one that would work.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Just one more clarification on the, on the parking. Is the driveway shared with the homeowner? Or are there separate driveways there?
Yeah, it's, their driveway should not be blocked. And we can make sure that it's not, that.
I'm also concerned there's going to be a lot of people walking across 45th and Bob and Luigi's because that parking just is not very big. And in the past, there've been a lot of people park at the Dollar General or whatever the name of that store is. I think that's the right name.
Dollar General.
Yeah. Okay. I don't shop there personally, so I can't remember it. But I know they use their lot as overflow, and it's quite often they fill up all of their gravel parking plus about half of the Dollar General lot. So I see parking as a big problem here. And, and people will be stopping on 45th Street unless we have somebody out there all day long telling them no.
Mr. Mayor, one more, one more clarification. I noticed in the packet, there's actually two applications. There's one from as early as like the first week of March. Was that one submitted and then had to be resubmitted because they didn't have all their ducks in a row? Was that kind of what happened?
I think what actually happened is that was submitted and approved, and then they've come back with an amendment to that, which is what you're seeing tonight is revised
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
So this is a really complicated issue, and there's a variety of concerns that we've heard. The concerns about the parking and the traffic and, you know, noise, those types of things come along with a commercial establishment. And what I didn't realize that I now know is that that parcel is zoned commercial. And so our zoning allows that property to have commercial enterprises on it with parking and noise and all of the, the things that come along with commercial entities. So I don't think that that aspect of it is enough to make me think that we should deny it because it's a, it's a commercially zoned lot. The thing that I'm wondering about is the nature of the fireworks themselves, because that's a different concern. The fact that there's going to be a tent full of explosives sitting a certain difference, distance from where somebody lives. And that's where I don't know what is, what is the appropriate distance to be safe? And how do we, how do we know that, that this is safe? And so I don't, do we have any information or guidelines on what constitutes a safe distance for a fireworks tent to be from a house? That, that's my chief concern is the safety aspect of it.
I will remind you that there was some fireworks hauled off in California a few years ago that blew up the whole block as the disposal team was getting rid of the fireworks that were being sold in an illegal location. So it can affect a lot larger space than what we're requiring. I think it's more of a fire distance we're talking about with 40 feet rather than explosion
I think I, I get what you're, I get what you're saying, Justin and John, but at the end of the day, we're not approving it, right? Like the fire marshal is going to make that decision. They're the professional of is it safe from a fire standpoint? So I'm going to probably let them make that call.
So if there was a question, Councilmember Smith, the fire department does come in and do an assessment. Now Keith does the initial kind of layout assessment because he knows what the fire marshal's standards are going to be and what they would expect for such businesses that contain explosives. So they looked at this and they were pretty firm in their, his understanding, they were pretty firm in their initial assessment about that yellow storage unit being where it is. And if anything, needing to move closer to the front. But knowing the contents and the types of explosives, we rely on the professional fire department to, to make those assessments as well.
So who ultimately is responsible for the safety determination? I guess that's my question because we, we have the zoning code which regulates what types of businesses can go on a parcel. But then for fireworks, above and beyond that, we have a separate permitting process where we've said we need extra special regulation around fireworks. And so that makes me wonder if we, the city, have the responsibility for making that safety determination because we have these extra steps that we've put in place for some reason. I don't know all the reasons that they're put in place. Or is that the fire department's job? Who, who's responsible for the safety aspect of this?
So the licensing to sell fireworks comes from the state fire marshal and all the authority that, that regulates what's, what can be sold and how it can be sold comes from them. We, just like with alcohol, we layer our local requirements on that as well. So to answer your question, your review, part of our review includes that fire marshal review, but they would get cited if they fail to comply with the fire marshal's requirements anyway, because they have state laws that control their license. But your review is more the appropriateness for Bel Air, and you can consider all of that. As far as responsibility, it's a really case by case basis. It's not purely outright, the city shall be liable. You're protected under the Tort Claims Act for decisions like this, so long as you're being reasonable and considering factors, all the decisions you make from this bench.
My question is, is more about making sure somebody feels responsible for the safety evaluation and less about the liability aspect of it. Because if we sit here and we assume it's the fire marshal that is, you know, really responsible for considering safety, and they're assuming that our zoning department or the Keith or we, the council are, you know, thinking about all the safety things, then nobody's actually thinking about the safety things.
Well, if you'd like to see what the fire marshal's report contains maybe, and see what they look at, and see if that covers safety enough, because they have a list of standards that they look at for safety and distance and the whys of they do what they do. So if the city would like to review that, we can table this and have a special meeting and look at really what they assess. But a general assessment of is the fire marshal's assessment sufficient? That's a policy decision that you all get to, get to decide. But I, we can do a better job of showing you what goes into that assessment so you can determine if it's, if it's sufficient for what you're, you're wanting, you're wanting to consider.
Well, I don't feel qualified to assess the safety. So I want to know who is, I guess, and it sounds like the fire marshal is, but it's not so clear that they are.
Right, you should consider safety in your decision too. I mean, the fire marshal has parameters for what they look at for safety and reasonableness, but if you don't like it, then you get to deny it for safety as well. So I don't want to say they're exclusively responsible for safety, but they're the professionals that are responsible for safety related to fireworks. But of course, it comes under your purview. So as much safety as you want to put into your decision is, is welcomed.
I want to throw something out that happened in our neighborhood. Somebody in our neighborhood ran a fireworks tent, which was not in Bel Air. He used his entire garage to store his product. And we had the fire marshal out one year, and they came out and they said, well, yeah, okay, this is wrong. You got to haul the stuff off. And that was the attitude we got. It was kind of like, yeah, whatever. The next year, he did the same thing. And the fire marshal comes out and he says, yeah, you shouldn't have this here, whatever. And we said, but the guy's done this two years in a row. And he says, I don't have any record of it. So he really didn't care that first year. And I'm afraid that we're going to get into that same situation is that it's, well, it's fireworks and it's fun and, you know, it's, it's close enough, what the heck? You know, we're, we think you're far enough away, but we're not, we're not 100% against this. You know, we like to blow off fireworks too. And we don't want to, we don't want to be the guy that says, no, you can't have fireworks.
Mr. Mayor. The other permits that have been issued, so the one at 45th and Oliver in the past, the one across the street catty corner, that's not being used because of the construction project at 45th and Woodlawn. Do we know what the distances there were? Like I know the tents at, one at 45th and Oliver are probably pretty similar in proximity to the house that was there. So I don't know that we should get into debating like the safety aspect. I don't know that we, I think Justin said it, well, we're not qualified, I don't think, to make that decision. I think the fire marshal is. And in the past, similar situations have been approved. So I think we need to have a strong case of why we would deny. And because I think it sets a precedent for like, are we going to evaluate each and every tent from this point forward as the public authority on safety with fireworks? I don't want to do that. Like I'm just going to make that statement. I don't want to be the person making that decision. That's not, I don't think what we're here for.
So we need to decide how we're going to move forward with this, if we're going to table it and have a little special meeting, or if we're going to, what we're going to do here. So entertain a motion, sort of more discussion.
So I don't, I, I, seeing the fire marshal's recommendations, at least for me personally, I, I leave this up. I'm not a fire safety expert. I, I just say, you know, I trust the fire marshal in this case because they're the experts. So for me, seeing the fire marshal's parameters and criteria is, is not something that's going to change my opinion personally.
I would suggest, and just following up with what Mr. Lashard said, if we do approve this, we might want to put a proviso on there that we, we put some sort of a signage or something to keep the Russell's property from being blocked, the driveway from being blocked. I don't know what's appropriate there, but we defer city staff to determine what's the best way to keep, keep people from doing that.
I think the only thing you can do is put no parking along 45th and enforce it strenuously.
Initially, our planning and zoning director was recommending a no parking sign right at the edge of their property and not. So if there is parking along the right of way on 45th, there's a point where it would stop. But if this council prefers no parking on 45th at all, then we can put a bunch of signs maybe and do it that way.
Personally, I like that one better, if, if that's something we could do.
Yeah, I think if we allow any parking on 45th, we're going to have abuse of that. And, you know, you go into Walmart parking lots or other parking spots, I see people pull into the handicap spot and jump out and run into the store. So there's going to be people parking on 45th unless we do something.
I, I totally agree with, with the parking situation. I mean, 45th regard, I mean, on top of not being courteous to the Russells, that is a total safety hazard. Anybody parking on 45th on that two lane road there.
And I don't know what Bob and Luigi's, it's not Bob and Luigi's anymore. I can't think of their name. I don't know what they're going to think of people using their parking lot either. Because that's a, that is against the law too, to park there and go to a different, and to jaywalk. All the, I mean, there's lots of parking issues here.
Well, again, we can let them know that, you know, they, they have a right to put signs on their property about parking, especially during this busy five days or so. We can add that to the list of things that we do.
So do we require the Beleno or Lions to have a person there that watches the street? Tell people to go back and move their car? Is that something that we could do?
Without knowing more about how they're staffed, I wouldn't want to rely on that. I think we can certainly ask them to, but I, I wouldn't want the public to rely on that person being there. Because we're not in contract with them to regulate the work. So I'm a little nervous about, you know, we, we can ask them, but I, I wouldn't want anybody to rely on that person being there. Because we're not going to be able to enforce it.
Putting up, by putting up no parking signs, do we have to pass another ordinance?
Or are the police allowed to write citations and warnings and tickets just with those no parking signs going up at 45th?
Right. And this kind of temporary special event, like the chief has authority to enforce, especially with Woodlawn Construction going there. Our ordinance, our code has flexibility for the chief to have authority to supervise and regulate and enforce that temporary event.
If we're going to do signage, I think we should get it out there as soon as possible. Not wait till opening day.
And I'm not certain yet if it would be our signage or if we would require them to put up signage. That will all have to be worked out through what resources we have, how quickly we can get them, our staff, that kind of. So we'll, we can get the signage, but I don't know if it'll be our signage or theirs.
Don't those have to be certain designed to be enforceable?
Not for a temporary situation.
Okay. So we can do the East Borough thing where they have the three-foot signs they put out for estate sales?
I haven't seen those.
You haven't seen that?
So if I'm understanding right, those no parking signs would be an amendment to their permit that we would approve? Is that how it would be enforced with the permit holder? How would that?
It would be enforced more as like a
Just a city.
Right, a city, like the police chief's authority would enforce it that way. We can add conditions that the, if you're wanting to approve the permit, the permit be approved with conditions that no parking signs be erected. And then between the city and them, we'll get the parking signs out and chief will enforce just on his own authority.
And then just with five or six days out, in terms of from Bellino's standpoint, does the city have no parking signs? Or are we expecting Bellino to round those up?
I know we had trouble getting, like, I know we go through contractors to get signs and things, so I don't want to promise that the city has signs. And Ty might be able to tell us more how we would get those and I think we rent them.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, what we'll do is we'll look at, you know, maybe rec center has some, they have issues out there, maybe. We'll see if we've got some. If we don't, we'll ask them to get some. And, you know, I would think you can make them as, well, like, oh, signs that you all will use for campaigning. You know, they're kind of a plastic type thing. They don't have to be metal. I mean, it's only going to be out there for five days. I'm sure we could come up with something or make them come up with something.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the relocation of the Bellino fireworks tent for the Bel Air Lyons Club to the northwest corner of 45th and Woodlawn, the Lot West, conditioned upon the Sedgwick County Fire Marshal approving the site for their needs and the applicant using a gravel base for the parking area and contingent on a staff review of the fire marshal's report finding that safety was a key consideration in the fire marshal's evaluation.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Dean. One question about the motion. Did you want to say anything about the no parking?
Seems like maybe that should be addressed separately.
You can, but it's okay if you were to include it and parking be addressed and no parking, no parking signs be erected on 45th?
Okay, no. All in my motion to add, and that no parking signs be erected on 45th Street near the Oliver intersection.
And Mr. Dean, do you second the amended motion?
I will second it with the amendment.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I heard two ayes. Okay, so Mr. David and Mr. Smith. And Mr. Dean, did you vote aye?
Yeah.
Okay. And Mr. Welch, did you vote aye?
I did not.
Okay. And Ms. Hamburg?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, so I have three ayes and nays.
Aye.
And one abstain. Okay, the motion carries three to one to one with Mr. Welch nay and Ms. Hamburg abstaining. Very good. Move on to item C. This consideration of development agreement. This development is zoned, is state residential with large lots. So staff worked with the developer to ensure two unique features. The private sewer system and streets will meet developer requirements as the system will be private. The developer and HOA will be responsible for the maintenance of the private sewer system. In regards to the narrow streets, Sedgwick County Fire Department has committed that they are okay with the narrow streets than normal, the 24-foot width versus the 29-foot normal, as long as no parking is allowed on either side of the street. With larger lot size and longer drives, enough parking should be available off the street. And I understand in our attorney's report that they have worked out a plan where we're going to pass a special ordinance to enforce no parking on those streets.
Right, if council wants to go with the narrower streets, council has the option of not allowing it.
This item was tabled at City Council meeting in June 7th as we did not know how the no parking on these streets would be enforced. So we now have a go-forward plan. So I would like the developer and/or the city attorney to advise about the plan where we've just got that. So that's, we know that, all right? So any questions for the staff or the developer?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I was just going to comment that I think the ordinance would be appropriate. We should go ahead and put that in motion. The development agreement looked good to me. We should just go ahead and codify the fact that no parking there is, you know, a safety requirement from the fire department.
Are you suggesting to make that part of the motion or?
No, we don't have an ordinance prepared, I don't think. But I'd like to just ask staff to start that process.
Oh, yes, of course.
I'll make a motion to accept the development agreement for preserve and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Ms. Hamburg. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, the ordinance you talked about later, so we're approving this if it gets approved on a promise or a hope that this ordinance, the parking ordinance, would be set into motion.
Yeah, I think we really have the obligation to do that ordinance because we're approving a narrower street.
Right.
Yeah. And I would request that a note be made in the minutes of the meeting for that. If you will, please. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one with Mr. Welch. Propose. Thank you. Move on to item D. So the next three items, D, E, and F, are also items I tabled from our June 7th meeting. So we'll, these are not new issues, but we didn't have a chance to talk about them. So item D is a city developer agreement with Skyview at Block 49, third edition. And city code requires the developer file a development agreement with the final plat. And developer's agreement outlines developer's responsibilities before and after construction. Are there any questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the development agreement for Skyview at Block 49, third edition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. David. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item E, just like item D, is city code requires developer file a development agreement. This one is for Chapel Landing Fifth Edition. Any questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
I'll make a motion to accept the development agreement for Chapel Landing Fifth and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Dean.
Nope.
Motion by Mr. David.
I'm sorry? Does it say wrong? Mr. Dave, the motion is by Mr. David. I wrote that down wrong. Did I say it wrong? Okay, sorry. All right. Motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Dean. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item F is a professional services with Baumann for Chapel Landing Fifth, second edition. This developer for Chapel Landing Fifth is ready to move forward with the design phase of the project. He's requesting Baumann be the engineers. The costs associated with the project will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. Are there any questions of staff or Baumann? Is a representative from Baumann here? I guess the only question you asked is of staff.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve an agreement for professional services with Baumann for Chapel Landing Phase Two and the amount not to exceed $233,000 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Ms. Hamburg. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item G is a consent to Annex Webb 254 LLC. So this is a second annexation Bel Air has considered in two meetings, showing growth and interest in Bel Air. The property owner is asking for their parcel to be annexed via a consent form. The city manager can explain the process of annexations as well as answer questions.
Mr. Leshard.
Mr. Mayor, while he's pulling up the PowerPoint, this is pretty exciting. We've got second annexation in two meetings. People want to be part of Bel Air. That's why life's better on the edge here. So this location is at K254 in Webb. You can see that Bel Air, whoops, Bel Air joins on the west and on the south. So again, state statutes regulate how annexations can occur and especially if they're larger than 20-acre parcels. This is, this is an 80-acre. So it has to, the boundary has to be at least 50%, which it is, as you can tell. Half of it is already abutting the city. No public hearings or notices required because they are requesting it be annexed. So it's not a unilateral type annexation. We do have the Wichita Water Contract, which speaks to annexations. This is, this does not require their approval because in the agreement, it states that if it's located within the 2035 urban growth area, there is no required approval from Wichita. And you can see in this, these light brown areas are within the growth area, 2035 urban growth area, so it doesn't require Bel Air or Wichita's approval. I did contact the city manager, Joe, just to let him know that we were going to do that and that he didn't have to require or didn't have to approve it. So benefits to Bel Air. So this is the parcel here. We've got a sewer main that's running across here on the south. We've got a lift station that was just put in that services all of this area up here. Now, since that wasn't in the city, we couldn't include that in a benefit district. But this area will benefit from that. So when they look to attach to the lift station, we'll look at benefit fees, costs to help share in that since they utilize it. The ADAD's utility customers, the big benefit for the city is that they will have to go through our planning and zoning for approval and PUD or whatever type of development they do and ultimately come to you. If it stays in the county, it goes through the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission for all the types of approvals. A little bit about the team and what they're doing. This is the development team that's going to be partnering to develop this 80 acres. Well-known people, you probably recognize some of them or at least their names. So this is what they, they don't have any plan yet. They will be putting that together. But this is kind of some of the things that they've talked about. That's a big corner there because it looks like K254 may have an interchange at Webb. And so they're going to be looking at a great opportunity for maybe a hotel. They've mentioned that. A travel center, fuel station, they've talked about that. Maybe some warehousing, some apartments, maybe a little retail. So, and these are actually things that they've done as a group in other locations. But if they were to actually put in six retail shops, a fuel station, a hotel, we do have a transient guest tax here. We don't collect any because we have no hotel, but we have that implemented. And then four warehouses, that could bring in about $1 million annually to the city if, in fact, they built what they're looking at. Question that we have always is streets. This currently is all maintained by Sedgwick County. So Sedgwick County, the state statutes state that a city can annex up to the right of way and then it's up to the county to request the city to annex to the center of the road since we're only on one side. So what's before you tonight is to annex the parcel and then we'll allow Sedgwick County to ask us if they want us to annex to the center. And then if they do, this is something that I've been working on under the mayor's guidance on other municipalities, Sedgwick County, Wichita, Kechai, and where we share roads. And for example, on this situation, this will still be Sedgwick County on this side and they will be utilizing Webb Road and which, and Bel Air will be on this side. So this would be a place where we would look to that agreement for shared maintenance on this. So with that, be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Welch.
If we do the, split the road down the middle, do we get into the same problem with policing that stretch of road?
Yeah, and that's always a funny issue because we've dealt with that. What I like about this is so far, I've already presented them with a proposed maintenance agreement and heard nothing back. So what I think would be a benefit is they come to us and say, well, we'd like to annex, we'd like you to annex to the center. I think that's a great opportunity to say, well, this creates a lot more headaches, a lot more issues. Why don't we work on getting this agreement of who's going to maintain, who's going to pay, those types of things? And I think that would be a great opportunity to get that agreement done before we agree to annex anything of the road.
So it'd leave us a little bit of leverage.
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
What do we think the timeline looks like for the developer to build something on this lot?
We're looking at probably, so, so I didn't show it, but they purchased another 160 here from the city a few weeks or a couple, a few months ago. So they now actually own three 80s along here. I'm going to guess, there's actually some interest from residential folks that may be taking something down, down at the southern end of it. Of course, they want to keep the frontage for 254 for warehouse and things like that, but they're not so concerned down here. And of course, the schools down here. So they've actually got some interest from residential folks of maybe selling that and do some development there. That would probably go quicker. This is probably going to be, I would say, a couple of years down the road because I think they're going to want verification from that K254 study of where actually those improvements are going to go. If, and in fact, this is an interchange, then, and KDOT would commit to that in that, that plan that they're completing to 2023 will be done. If the commitment's there, then I would guess they'd start marketing it for some growth. Uh, if the commitment's there, then I would guess they'd start marketing it for some growth. So I would think, you know, as far as the, what they're looking at, hotels and things, that's probably going to be two to five years down the road.
Do you have any insight on what the desire is to go ahead and do this annexation now versus closer to when they might need city services?
I, the, the, the reason that I think they want to do it now is because once it's annexed, then they're going to want to come back with a zoning. And, and because those other parcels are zoned industrial, they're going to ask for this to be industrial as well. So once you get a parcel that's within a city, that they, that they know how, um, building permits are issued, what the zone is, what's allowed within that city and the zone, then it's much easier to market. So I think that's why they want to do all of that now so that they can start marketing it. So, you know, development could occur rather than waiting and having it right now being in the county under agriculture.
Did they have to be in a city to get an IRB?
No.
No.
Nope.
So that's not a motivating factor?
Right.
Mr. Mayor. Ty, question on that property. The city doesn't own any of that property. The developer currently owns or it's privately owned.
Right.
Is there any consideration that we need to give to? Kind of talking about K254 and potential frontage road needs along that route and how we may, I mean, obviously we're voting on annexing. We're not voting on approving a change in ordinance, but sort of a change in zoning. But maybe that could be a consideration down the road by, by approving the annexation. We're not necessarily changing any input that our planning commission could have on what that lot would look like later. There's no, I guess what I'm asking, there's, there's no downside to what that future plan looks like by just moving it, moving the annexation forward, is there?
No, if I understand your question, that their ideas of, of developing, they can implement them once it's annexed either way. Is that what? Could you repeat the question?
Yeah, I think, I think the thing that I'm kind of hitting on is if we were to annex the, the lot, it still has to go through code change, like you had mentioned earlier, which then will give them more certainty of what they can put on it.
Yeah, so it'll be annexed in as, as agriculture, because that's what it is.
Classified.
Yep. And then to do any kind of zone change, then they'll have to go through the city's process, which includes notification, planning commission approval, and ultimately your approval.
Gotcha.
And I believe this developer is well aware of the frontage road needs there. So whether that property has space there for that frontage road, they know that, that it's going to have to be allowed.
Yes, and the interesting thing about this piece, I think it showed that, um, they've alr, that's already been taken care of. The, at some point, um, I, they must have, this property owner must have given some right of way to the state.
So it's already there.
It's already there. And of course, the city owns, um, the rest of it all the way over to Rock. So the great thing is the right of way for the frontage is there.
Good. So there won't be any question about that down the road.
No, and that helps save the project, KDOT project, because that they don't have to go and condemn and buy property.
Right.
That helps, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
So, you know, obviously the biggest downside, the only downside here that I see is the road maintenance, you know, taking on another half mile of, half of a road, uh, potentially if Sedgwick County requests us to annex, and I can't imagine they won't. And so that's what I'm thinking about is if, if we annex this property and then nothing happens on it for a long time, we've suddenly added some, some extra road maintenance to our balance sheet that we've got to deal with on an ongoing basis. We already have a lot of that here in the city and it's pretty expensive to do road maintenance. Uh, you know, long-term, I think that it's, it would, it's going to be a net positive, but the payback may be a long way down the road. Uh, the developer may have great intentions of developing in the next year or two or three. But, you know, economic conditions can change. Interest rates have already gone up. There are a lot of factors that could cause that to be, you know, 10 or 20 years down the road. Or instead of commercial and big box retail and things that bring in big revenue, it could all get filled with houses, uh, which still, you know, bring in revenue that would offset that road maintenance. But, uh, it's, it's at a lot different level. So do we know what the current condition of that portion of road is? And have, have we looked at that to understand if we annex this in and then we suddenly get to where we're responsible for that section of road? Is it next year, we're going to have to rebuild it and do a $14 million project on that road? Or is it 10 years down the road? What does this look like?
So I can tell you, um, um, and I hate to admit it, but this section is better than what Bel Air has down here. So, because the county has maintained it, so this is a better road than what our section is.
Well, they get more money than we do.
So you're right. The, the down, the, the only concern that I would have is that, um, from a development standpoint, if the city didn't annex it, they could still develop it in the county. And, um, from their standpoint, then it could be more attractive because then there's no city taxes added to it. So that those properties are 45 mils less than if it were in the city. So, and now I'm not, you know, who knows if they would even entertain that or consider that. But the, the longer that it's, if it's not in Bel Air, then Bel Air does not control any of the zoning or development.
Mr. Mayor. And just to be perfectly clear, when Sedgwick County requests it, we legally have to take it, right?
The roadway, um, yeah, that's the way the ordinance is written. We, we're, they ask us to voluntarily take it, but when we don't, they can, when they get to it, submit a request that we take it.
So the, the balance of that is it, it does give us a little bit of leverage on getting our agreement. Now, I agree, I understand that we should have that agreement anyway, but, but, uh, it does give us a little leverage to get that moving along. So that, that is, that is a good thing because then we would have assurances that other roads that are shared with the county are be, are, we're getting some compensation for. And that was the whole reason for pursuing those agreements.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Just to clarify, it's in better condition. The road is in better condition than the road to the south. Is it in overall really good condition? Like we're more than five years away from replacement?
Andy, have any thoughts on our engineers here? So let's see what.
I've driven the road and I've seen it's in pretty good shape, but I've never really looked at it for a Bel Air issue.
The county does regular maintenance, usually on a five to seven year schedule. So I would say it is in maybe not very good condition, but in good condition. And there would be no complete replacement required in probably 10 to 20 years if nothing was done to it. I would recommend that we continue on a similar cycle, um, maybe not the five to seven, but a similar cycle to what we can afford and we can keep it in good condition.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the consent to annex from Webb 254 LLC and authorize the mayor to sign.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. Smith. Any other discussion before we vote? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item H is, uh, the ordinance of annexation, which, uh, once you have the, uh, application approved, you can move forward with the ordinance. So really, uh, it's just a matter of moving forward with the additional steps here. So any questions or discussion about the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith. David.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance annexing and incorporating a portion of the west side of Webb and 254 into the boundaries of the city of Bel Air, Kansas. Webb 254 LLC property and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Dean. Any discussion concerning the ordinance? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Frank David.
Aye.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Aye.
And Mr. John Welch.
Aye.
And the motion carries five to zero, Mayor.
Thank you. On to item I. So over the last two years, the government body has, uh, and the staff have heard complaints from residents living on gravel roads related to road conditions, drainage and dust. This topic was included in several workshops and council meetings over this period. Numerous ideas and suggestions were contemplated. After much consideration and discussion, council included, concluded, uh, a paved road with new ditches solves all problems. Uh, we also acknowledged the lack of ditch maintenance by the city added to some of the poor conditions. Garber Engineering created, uh, petitions for property owners to sign that would approve the project and allow the cost to be spread as special assessments. And recognizing some of the drainage costs should be done, borne by the citizens at large, council is determined to paying a total of $700,000 divided, uh, dollars divided among the three neighborhoods and would help reduce the overall cost of them, as well as recognize reduced future maintenance expenses. So, and then we have the breakdown here of the, how much that would spread to each of those, uh, divisions, if, if those divisions approve it. Uh, if one doesn't approve it, uh, they wouldn't, then, then of course it doesn't apply to that one. That doesn't approve the ba, the paving. So, um, any questions, just Garber or staff? Is, is there a representative from Garber here? Okay, only staff then. Think we've talked about these a lot, so.
Just for my benefit, since I'm new, I was thinking about the simple majority of property owners. You know, if it's 51, 49, just, you know, for those 49%, if some of them may say, I don't want this. I like living on a dirt road because of the real rural feel. Or I simply can't, I can't afford this extra X amount per month. That's just, for lack of a better term, too bad if, if 51% approve it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To be blunt about it, yeah, it is kind of like that. Uh, unfortunately, it's, it's a majority rule on this.
Okay.
Yeah. Of the property owners of that division, each division votes separately.
Okay.
Okay.
Since I, I'm, I'm sure there have been workshops and, um, what is the general? I'm assuming that there's a general feel that we should do this because it's up here.
It's a little bit of a mixed bag. I've gotten citizens from, um, Aurora Park who are for it. I've gotten citizens who are against it. I really don't know how to measure Aurora Park. Uh, on 47th and Hillcrest, uh, everybody I've talked to so far wants it. They can't hardly wait to get the petitions. But, and, and Cozy Drive, I, I don't have a feel for that one at all. That's just my, my thumbnail sketch of what I see.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I was just going to add, and maybe our city attorney can clarify, but I believe this, this process of the petitions and special assessments, that, that's a process that's laid out by state statute. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so basically what we're doing here is we're facilitating the process to see if, if that's something that the neighborhood wants to do.
Correct. And if I may add that it, it's, it was originally written as 51%, but that breakdown could include residential owners. If, if the, the recommendation that the city is saying is that the council consider only owners of record. However, the statute does allow the council to consider the majority of resident owners of record, resident owners of record of more than one half of the area of the entire benefit district, or owners of record of, um, one or more lot. So there's different ways to break that group down. So we just want to be clear, staff is sending a, a, a recommendation, but it's still to your point. It, I just don't want it to be represented that it's 51% of property owners because not necessarily, there's different ways to break that up.
So what is staff recommendation on this?
It will be majority of lot owners.
Majority of lot owners. So if somebody owns two lots, they get two votes.
Exactly. That's the, that's my understanding of the recommendation as it stands with advisement from our, um, our engineering company.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions, concerns? I'll entertain a motion. And this is a conditional motion, a motion conditioned upon property owners approving.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve spending $480,000 in Aurora Park, $115,000 in Arthur Heights, and $105,000 on Cozy Lane for drainage and future deferred maintenance costs, conditioned upon the receipt of a valid signed petition from each subdivision petitioning for a special district to pave the gravel roads.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Welch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
I would, I was an aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was, actually wanted to say one thing before I voted. I, I really do feel for, for the people that may be against this. Nobody believes in property rights more than me, uh, but this is a tough deal where, um, when you're not living on the back 40 and you share these resources, majority is the best way to do it. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to be an aye, um, because I think these petitions are, are just the best way to do it, so.
Thank you. All right. So I have a vote of five to zero on this. Is that accurate? I'll make sure I write that right. Thank you very much. I appreciate your comment. Sorry I cut it off, but jumped right to the vote. So, uh, moving on to item J, sidewalk replacement program. City code requires property owners who have sidewalks in the right of way adjacent to their property to maintain and replace the sidewalk at their own expense. We also understand sidewalks are used and benefit all residents. So in June of 2021, council adopted the 2021 sidewalk replacement program, where the city would issue grants to assist the cost of sidewalk repairs. 21 sidewalk repairs were approved in 2021 totaling $16,000. Staff believes the program was successful with several sidewalks being repaired and replaced. $10,000 is included in the 2022 budget for the program to continue. And are there any questions of staff?
Do we have any feel for how many sidewalk replacements we'd do this year?
We don't, and they're typ, they're typically generated through code enforcement. When they go out and notify a property owner that there's an issue and then they let them know of the, um, the grant program. And that's, that's, I think, what most of it was generated last year. So, um, and I think that's why it was positive is, you know, to go tell somebody, you got to fix your sidewalk. But there are funds available to assist with that. So I, I see no issue easily spending the $10,000 that was budgeted this year.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question to clarify. Besides, uh, landowners that apply for these grants, are there any other people eligible? Like do HOAs own any of the sidewalk in town? Is it all city-owned in public spaces or landowners? Just a quick clarification.
There could be some HOAs that own some. Uh, the city has some, of course, we, that's separate. We maintain those ourselves, so, um, so yeah, there could, there could be a situation where an HOA has a sidewalk.
Thank you. But, but it's sidewalk that's in the city right of way. If it's, because we do have some HOAs that, that have sidewalk that is not in city right of way. And they do maintain that themselves.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there any reason we couldn't bump the, up to 15,000 this year? I, I didn't know, we only budgeted 10,000, but we seem to have a little excess in the budget.
Yeah, I mean.
I think 5,000 is going to make a big deal as well.
I'm sure, you know, with, uh, typically Ted's pretty conservative on his expenses. So we, and that's why last year we spent more than the 10 because the funds were available, the, the, within the overall budget. So, um, so you could, you know, you could certainly increase it to 15 if you like, or do just the same thing we did last. So, you could, you know, you could certainly increase it to 15 if you like, or do just the same thing we did last year where it's budgeted at 10. And, and I can go over that based on the needs and how much funds we have.
If you make it 15, he still has his discretion amount. He'll bump it up even more.
I know, but cost of a lot of things have gone up this year and.
That's true.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I would support doing 15 on it. I think this is a really good program that helps beautify our community. Our sidewalks are well utilized. I see people walking all the time. I use them quite a bit. I think it's a really important feature here. I think this is a great program.
Mr. Mayor, I'm really confused now. If this doesn't limit it to 15 or 10, I'm not sure what this motion does. It authorizes sidewalk program, but it doesn't, it doesn't limit it to the budgeted amount.
So, I'll try my, my own version of it, and, and if that's not clear, maybe city manager or city attorney can help. But, this program sets a policy in place that we will help pay for sidewalks, okay? It is on a first-come, first-served basis. Not all comers necessarily get approved. Ty, being the city manager, Mr. Lasher being the city manager, has a discretionary spending authority. I think it's limited to $10,000. So, last year he approved an additional $6,000 expense under that, that spending authority that he has. So, that's what happened there. We can say this is 10,000. We can say it 15. He could, he could see more applications come in and say, you know, "We really need to do this anyway," so, and see that there's money in the budget and utilize that spending authority again. Or he could say, "Well, wait a second. The budget's too tight. We can't really do that this year," okay? So, that would be something that he would have the discretion to do.
Thank you.
Does that help?
That helps a lot.
Mr. Mayor, one, one final comment. It does appear that the program's working. I like the write-up from staff. I mean, people certainly benefited, benefited from it, and it, at the, at the end of the day, made our public safer by having safer public sidewalks. One comment I will make, though, is I want to make sure that we're not replacing cracked sidewalks because builders are breaking sidewalks. And I'm not sure if staff has any way with the permitting process to ensure that those things are checked. And, and I guess what I don't want to see is this become, well, the city replaces sidewalks, so the builders just decide to drive over sidewalks with heavy equipment. That's a concern I would have as a, as a citizen, that we're gonna start funding that continuation.
So, I think Ms. Stevens may have some words to say about that. I, I've had this conversation with her previously, so I'll let her elaborate on.
I recently built a house and kind of watched out for it on my own, but I do know that's a concern, so.
So, when the code enfor, or the code enforcement and the building and zoning department review these applications, they do look at where the location is. And it's pretty much all the applications that they have approved are within neighborhoods. There's, in the policy, there's things that say if there's a stump that's causing the heaving of the sidewalk, the homeowner is responsible for moving that, removing that stump at their own cost prior to the city being willing to accept the application for the grant. So, there are stipulations in there. We are very aware, building and zoning department is very aware of builders causing issues. Keith is out on a regular basis looking at those and understands full well where they are, and this grant process would not pay for those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I have another question. I, I remember last year there was kind of a problem with some homeowners that did their own replacements instead of letting the city contractor do it. Do we still want to allow them to do that, or do we want to make everybody use a city contractor at this point if they're gonna get the grant money?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a good question, and we, we, I think we had one issue that we struggled with on an individual wanting to do it themselves. As far as last year, there were three grants that we reimbursed the homeowners. So, of the 21, 18 of those just used the contractor that the city did, which was PP&amp;J. And there were only three that did their own, and it totaled about $1,900. So, it's not a large amount of people doing that. So, if you wanted to, you know, make that a requirement that they use a city person, that would only affect a few, very few.
Yeah, I just wondered if that would eliminate some problems.
It, it certainly, you would not have to apply for the program if you wanted to replace your own sidewalk because you could certainly do that anytime, right?
Yes, it still has some of the city code, though, no matter who replaces it.
Right.
So, even if you replace it badly, you still have to, you're gonna have to redo it.
Yep, that's right.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I kind of like that suggestion. I suspect that the three grants that were paid out that were not done through the city contractor were materially more expensive per, however you measure sidewalk, per unit of sidewalk. I'm, I'm sure it was materially more expensive because it wasn't part of the bulk pricing. And so, I, it may make sense to just do it all the same.
I don't know. They just bought concrete. It might have been cheaper. If, they don't have to use a contractor, do they, to do the sidewalk?
No, but they do have to follow our codes, and, and then they're required to be inspected.
So, if they're slightly handy, they could build their own forms and order concrete and have it delivered and.
Yep, and then we would inspect it to make sure that it meets our codes.
Or mix it themselves. I've done that before.
Depending on the.
Not doing much.
Depending on the repair versus replacement, they may have to get a permit. Depending on how much pouring of concrete happens.
Mr. Mayor, my suggestion, I, if the city's paying for this, it's a grant, right? They're applying, we're approving. I would like to see it be by a city-approved contractor. That's my personal opinion.
That's really, anytime you do any project you get a permit for, has to be done by a city-approved contractor unless the homeowner's doing it themselves. So, I'm giving you a very brief overview of that requirement, but.
Right.
There's, there may be some whistles and bells in there, but that's, that's the general rule, okay?
So, just out of curiosity, if a, if a homeowner did want to pour their own sidewalk, could they still use the grant program? And would it just, how, how would you figure out the cost? They would just bill an hourly rate that was reasonable, or how would that work?
I would think it would only pay for the materials, not for the labor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of glancing over. Tyler, I do see on the last page, it says only work done by licensed Bel Air contractors are eligible for reimbursement. So, that is a requirement. They have to be licensed here. And talks about that nonprofits are not, or taxing entities are not eligible. So, nonprofit would be an HOA, wouldn't be eligible for that. School wouldn't be eligible for it. Let's see, the question on, you know, could they do it themselves and just pay for materials? Not seeing that. It seems like we had, they, we created a fee based on what it would be to hire that done. So, it was per square foot or something, and that's, that's what we would reimburse them for. Because I think that was a concern that we had is if they hired it themselves, the cost could be more. I think Justin kind of alluded to that. So, we would determine if we were to hire somebody to go fix so many panels, the cost would be X amount. And therefore, if you wanted to do it yourself, that would be the max we'd reimburse you is for that cost.
Okay, under that, I think that we should require that they use the city contractor. Not just a city-licensed contractor, but the contractor we picked to do the sidewalks. And probably get a better deal anyway if we're doing them all at once.
So, do we need to revise this, this program and rewrite it and to make those changes and bring this back?
Yeah, I mean, we could, so I did see here that reimbursements are based on measurements and cost per square foot determined by the city. So, that's where we would determine the cost. So, if you, you know, if you wanted to go ahead and approve it tonight, you could approve it as amended with only utilizing the city contractor. And then we could go out and we can pull all those where individuals could do their own and require that they use a city contractor. Or if you want to wait, we could bring it back. The next meeting, we can make all those changes, then you can see what the changes look like.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Those sound like pretty simple amendments. I think I'm leaning towards just approving it as amended tonight.
That's, that's fine. Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the sidewalk replacement program for 2022, amending the program to set the budget at $15,000 and amending the program to require the city contractor be utilized and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Ms. Hamburg. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item K. This is something that needs to be done for a long time. So, I've said before, we need to address potential flooding issues before they become floods. So, the area north of Railroad Tracks, east of Edgemore, and south of 45th, and west of Woodlawn drains through Trib 7 into Quail Ridge Pond, and then through the North Fork, damage, drainage way into Wichita. The creek is half-owned by Heartland Animal and half by Norfolk HOA, which does not exist. There have been issues in the past with drainage way not being maintained, causing drainage issues for residents. Previous councils have felt it important for the city to clean out drainage way and obtain temporary easements to conduct it, to, to conduct the work. It seems that we should simply obtain a permanent easement to allow the city to access to the drainage way should it need to be in the future. So, Jackie created the permanent easement and was able to obtain the needed signatures. So, are there any questions of staff?
Are we gonna install any kind of access paved driveway or something to get there off of Woodlawn?
No, staff said that their equipment is able to go over our right-of-way readily, so there's no need to increase, to insert any permanent driveway.
Okay, and since we just talked about sidewalks, is it gonna be light enough we don't break the sidewalk?
I, I think so.
I'm getting an nod from Ann, so I guess it's okay.
Yeah, Ann and Dave looked at it and assessed all of that, so.
Okay. I trust Ann. If she says yes, it's good.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. It might be for Ann. With the Woodlawn project, the design and the box culverts that are tying in there, the new, the two new box culverts, I assume all of that is being, that whole channel is being considered as a part of that project. And that'll be cleared, cleared out and kind of returned to previous condition at the end of the, the project, and then kind of stabilized so that we're preventing massive situation of maintenance right off the bat with this easement, I guess is my, my, my note or question.
So, the limits of construction for the Woodlawn project do not extend through the entirety of that area. It just extends, I probably, I don't know off the top of my head, I'm gonna say 20 to 50 feet off the end of that box culvert. That area will be cleaned up and restored following construction with the appropriate stabilization methods. The rest of the creek area will not be touched.
So, that'd be something that the city would then evaluate and take care of?
Correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Do we need to get in there and do that right now? Is it that overgrown?
Part of the, the trouble with this one is the trees and stuff are, and vegetation is what is holding the slopes. Some concerns are you need, some people think that you need to remove all of the trees and area that is along those slopes, but that would cause more damage because it would rip up the, the roots are holding the soil in place and is what is helping maintain that integrity of the channel at this point. As far as cleaning out debris and shrubs, I have not been over there and looked at it for that purpose recently, so I cannot say. My gut feeling is it's probably okay at this point, and I'd say it's something that it's gonna need to be done every couple of years, but probably not every year. The other caveat that I would like to say that the council needs to be aware of is there is railroad right-of-way on the south, and there's a portion of the channel that does go through the railroad right-of-way. We do not have any access on that point. So, while we can clear out and clear debris out of a portion, a good portion of that channel, there is a probably 25 to 50-foot area that we will not be able to get on. So, any residents that are listening, please do not expect that portion to be cleaned out.
So, if we see that that's a problem, though, we advise the railroad that they need to get it cleaned out, right?
That is correct, and we have not had much success with getting the railroad to act to clean any of that out, so.
Is it getting overgrown?
It's, it, there's enough area for water to pass at this point. We've had a lot of large storms come through, and we have not had any flooding issues. The area that is just to the north, the whole drainage reserve has performed its function and allowed water to sit there until it has time to go past. And I don't believe we have had much flooding in that area.
All right.
On, on the riprap that's being placed at the end of that back, I assume riprap will be established to provide like scour protection at the edge of the construction limits.
Correct.
I would suggest that staff take a look at that and make sure that there isn't additional needed outside of the limits that maybe the contractor placing that riprap could consider as a part of the installation if it's, if it's needed, if the staff deems that there's enough erosion. The, the thing that concerns me a little bit is just that bend and the velocity and volume of water that'll be coming through the two new box culverts and whether or not we'll start seeing that, that bank. But, I'll leave it, leave it to staff to evaluate that further just to comment about cost efficiency of the contractor placing the riprap.
Sure. We will definitely keep a watch on that. Thank you.
That section of the railroad is really the southern end there, isn't it? Is that correct?
Yes, where you see the 100-foot, that is the extent of the railroad right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
We acquired a maintenance easement on the railroad right-of-way in the portion of the road recently, I think, so that we could maintain the road in that area that was part of us adding $100,000 or so, I think, to the Woodlawn project. Did that, did that not also extend to an area that would allow us to maintain this?
No, that was a very limited portion just over the road right-of-way.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
There's no dollar consideration for this easement, is there?
No.
Okay. So, it's just paperwork. All right. I'm good with that. I'll make a motion to approve the permanent, permanent access construction and maintenance easement in the North Fork addition and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. David. Any, just more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Is there a need for an executive session? Didn't think so, but maybe the opportunity. Hearing none, move on to item 13, discussion of future issues. So, there are a couple of topics from our workshop last Tuesday that we did not have time to discuss, so we can certainly take time to discuss those now if the council would like to. Those items are the lot across from City Hall and the TIF policy.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welch.
Can we take a five-minute break before we get to that? Because that's gonna take half hour to an hour.
Yep, we certainly may. So, you want to call for a five-minute recess?
Yes. I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Ms. Hamburg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. We are in recess for five minutes. We are in recess for five minutes. Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. Mr. Lasher has some things he would like to present, I believe.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I think maybe our last workshop, we talked about the commercial lot across from City Hall. And we've got a party that's interested in purchasing that. So there's two things to talk about is that lot. And then the TIF policy, which is something that they're considering using to get that developed. So just wanted to give you some history. In 2002, all of Central Park was designed, and this is the, actually the section or the corner of 53rd and Rock. So this would be Rock, this is 53rd. City Hall sits here. You can see that there's some additional buildings that were included for the acreage that's here on City Hall. This was all going to be basically a retail. And you can see there was kind of a gathering place in the middle. The idea was to create a downtown for the city of Bel Air. This was done in, as I said, in 2002. And as part of that, all the different pieces of Central Park was also designed. So in 2017, the council at that time was looking at, you know, is this still feasible? Can this all be resident, or retail? Or does something look different? Or how do we market this? Is, you know, can we get anybody to even look at th, this much retail? So we hired LK Architects and they did a community survey. And that was included in your packet, kind of the results of that. And this was the new concept that came out of it. The idea was that there would be a big gathering place. This is a retention pond. Then there would be these parcels around it. That could be some dense residential, could be some multifamily, like apartments or condos, could be some retail, some commercial. Commercial being like a dentist or an architect or something like that. And so that was the, the new concept. And as such, then, since that time, I've been visiting with developers and saying, you know, what about something like this, a big gathering place? And started to get more interest in the development here with that community type park. So what we've been asking for this parcel, it's about 24 acres, a million dollars, and that price would pay off specials. So there's special assessments that went in to help pay for these roads and the water and sewer mains that went in. So there's about 657,000 in remaining specials. Cost is about 131,000 annually. And these specials will pay off in 2026. So it is zone commercial. And as I said, we've got one person, a developer, that's interested in that. So I think the questions and the thoughts that you all had or wanted to discuss further was, is this still the vision? Is this what we want to sell to potential investors? Is the price right? A million dollars paying off the special assessments? The city makes around 300 and some thousand after the specials are paid for. You know, obviously, the thought process was the city didn't want to be the developer. So this was kind of the vision of the city could do this and let the developer do the rest. And again, this is a concept. This could, this is not platted. It's all one lot, so this could come in this direction. It could move anywhere. But the idea was, is this kind of something that the city would commit to? And again, that's the question is, you know, is the city committed to putting something like this in? Really, what we've heard from developers is this becomes the anchor. So when they're looking at development, you know, you hear about what's the anchor? Is it a Walmart? Is it whatever? Well, for this situation, this park and gathering place is what they're calling their anchor. And then they'll develop around it. And then are you open to a TIF district? And we'll explain that, that's the next, the next part. And the last thing is, you know, what's the vision? And how do you want me to market this? What do you want this to look like? What are we going after as far as development? So that's kind of the background history and it's, the rest is up for you to discuss.
I think I said before, my vision is that the city has no business being in the development business. So let's not go down that road is, is my preference. As far as the park, I'm okay with it, but you gotta work with a developer to do that. You build a park and it limits the development. You build a park in concert with the developer, then you have something that's a win-win. So I'm, I'm good with that. That's at least my view. And, and, but I'm not, I'm not hanging on to a park that says, oh, we gotta have one, okay? If the developer says, hey, I got a different view for that property, I'm all in favor of them taking their view and using their vision because the other ones gotta take the risk. The city's not taking those risks of developing that property. So that's, that's the way I look at it.
Well, that's one of the things I was thinking about, was that we, we shouldn't be designing any part of that 20 acres. Whoever buys it ought to design everything they want. And the last thing we saw was only a two acre park. It was a very small park compared to this. And if we're gonna go down to two acres, it's not on that picture. But I think that west corner of the lot here that City Hall sits on could be turned into something like a bandstand. We could plant some trees, we could put in a water park, and we could have our park there without involving the developer at all. And I'm concerned we're pushing commercial. It'd be nice to have it there, but the way things look to me right now are most of our commercial developments happening along Webb Road. We were just talking tonight about Webb and 254, getting a lot of commercial development going there. And I, you know, we may get some doctor's offices and stuff, but I don't think we're gonna get anywhere near the commercial development that was originally envisioned for that lot. I just don't think it's gonna happen. If it was going to, we'd start seeing something already. And we don't even have anything at 45th and Rock. And that lot's been available for years. So I think, I forgot the word I was gonna use. But, but the, the, the businesses are just gonna grow organically. That's what I was looking for. They'll grow where they want to grow and us trying to force them to this corner, I don't think is a good idea. Now, that's way off base from where we've been. But, like I said, I, I would just market the property as 20 acres. And I'd ignore this argument about the, the specials because we're paying them off anyway. And if we have to pay them off year by year until we get the right person to buy that whole lot, that's just the way it goes. It's really not costing us anything. Until we actually get some development there, we're not gonna get new taxes. So we need to find somebody that has a vision and they're willing to go with it and even subdivide that, you know, sell off a chunk of it to somebody because it's been on the market a long time. And it seems to be that most people just don't have the appetite for 20 acres of commercial development.
Well, I was gonna say a lot, but then I can just say amen to the prior to discussion. Yeah, I kind of feel the same way about the specials and that the city should definitely not be in the development business. What? I'm trying to think of, so, so you, you were asking us, does a million dollars seem like the right price for selling off the 20 acres? What, what do you think? You, you probably don't have an answer to this. If we wanted to get rid of this land and, and get rid of it now, what, what do you think, without any TIF district? What, what would you have to sell it for? Maybe the 20 acres altogether to, to get rid of it?
Well, I think the million dollars is, seems like that's 50 cents a square foot, which is a pretty good deal. So, you know, but there's special assessments and most developers, especially if they don't have something they're gonna do immediately, they don't want to sit on land and pay special assessments, holding costs. So, so that's the big issue of, of really running into trying to sell it for any amount is if they're looking at, let's see, what was the specials? 131,000 a year just to hold it. Then that's one of the reasons we've not sold it is because, not for any price, because they're paying 131,000 to sit on it. And then there's 657,000 in remaining specials.
Can I clarify on the specials? I'm not saying we shouldn't be willing to pay off the specials. I'm just saying there's no rush for us to pay off the specials. It's gonna cost us the same amount of money either way we go.
So, and that was the idea was just to, you know, if someone would pay for that corner, a million dollars, we would pay off the specials. So then their holding costs go away. And, you know, a 50 cents a square foot is not a bad part. I mean, you know, again, you get, it's, it's location, 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 which is all realtors say. But land over there at Greenwich and K254 is on for six bucks a square foot. So 50 cents a square foot is a pretty good deal. But again, look at the locations are very different. You mentioned that as well, is the location of this. And like I said, the, the park thing, so when the developer, especially this side, 20, 24 acres is a good, pretty good sized development for retail, commercial, something like that. And so what they all look at is what's, like I said, what's the anchor? Is there gonna be a target here that we're gonna build around or, or what? Well, there's none of that. It's gonna, there's gonna be none of that. So they all like the idea of the park and the gathering spaces because you're bringing people to that location. And then the hope is that they'll have a, you know, an ice cream shop, a restaurant. Like you said, it's not gonna be, they're not gonna have five to choose from. You know, maybe an ice cream shop, maybe it's gonna be a few things like that. This is not gonna be a major retail type venture. So, so when, when you say, you know, when, and, and if, when you say, well, the city's not going to do, commit to a park, which is their anchor, then they're gonna say, well, I'm not interested in even buying 24 acres for any kind of retail. Maybe I'll just buy it and put houses in. But they're not gonna pay a million dollars to put houses in. Because, you know, we've been selling, again, large chunks for 10,000 an acre. So you're looking at 240,000 to put residential in there. So it kind of, you know, it goes back to, we've talked, the mayor mentioned, somebody had asked about it, you know, what's the vision? You know, is the vision to do something? Is it just to get rid of it, put houses in there? That's, that's the vision that I, you know, in order to do something with this, to market it, that's when I need to know what that vision is.
But you currently have a developer showing strong interest in this property right now.
Yeah, we've, I've got a developer. In fact, I was emailing him today. He's ready to commit to an agreement to purchase it as long as you would support a TIF. And again, the TIF, and we'll talk more about that. But the TIF takes tax money and puts it back into the project. And that would be including is that park. And so what would happen in that situation is that the developer doesn't pay for it. The city doesn't pay for it technically. But the taxes that are generated, the new taxes that are generated do pay for that. So the developer gets that anchor that they want. City gets a park. Not, not this, not the, what we talked about, the vision there, not that size of park. But the city would get some retail. And so the idea is to try to create a win-win for the developer, for the city. And um, so the idea is to try to create a win-win for the developer, for the city. Um, and then using some of those tax funds to do that.
So those TIF, and, and I know you want to go on and explain that and maybe it's a good time to, to go on and understand that TIF policy. But that TIF policy is a additional tax, like a sales tax or, or how does that work?
No, so a tax is, it's called tax increment finance. And basically what that means is that you, whatever the tax is being collected today is froze for the next 20 years. And then that increment that's created by whatever's built there. The property tax from that goes back to this district. You created district. And pays for that infrastructure. And there's certain things that can be paid for. You can't pay for their building and things like that. There's requirements to that. And so in this situation, since the land bank owns it, land bank pays no taxes on it. So there's zero property taxes being collected or being paid. So whatever that developer would build, they'd pay the property taxes. And their benefit is that that, that property tax that's collected goes back to the district to pay for infrastructure. Goes back to pay for the park, goes back to pay for streets and water and sewer, those types of things. So that's the benefit the, the um, the developer gets.
So the developer still pays the tax. It's just where the tax goes. Where the, that money is now devoted to reimbursing the, the bonds for uh, the infrastructure costs of roads and sewers and water and all those things.
Yep, yep, that's exactly right.
You said, you said something about it's frozen. So if, if the tax, just throw a number out, is taxes $50,000 a year. It's that way for the entire life of the TIF? You, it never increases even if property, even if property values increase?
Right. Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, except ours is at zero, right?
Yes.
We're, it's like an IRB that we get a little say in how they spend the savings.
Yeah, so um, so yeah, and, and I've got an example on the TIF. If you want to, you know, if you want to move on to explaining how the TIF works, we can do that. Or if you want to just concentrate on what you want this to be. But I've got an example, IRB versus what a TIF does, why there's a difference.
Does the county and school, they have to approve us doing the TIF district?
Yes. Because that's the other benefit is the uh, the TIF is the property tax. So that's property tax collected from all the entities goes back to this, not just the city.
I think, and, and I, I know Mr. Welsh is the one that brought this up to talk about. And, and I'm good with looking at different visions for this property. But I think if we got a, somebody that's very interested in this property and is ready to spend some money on it. We need to pursue, pursue that avenue and see where that goes. If that falls through, then maybe a more in-depth discussion would be, be in order. But that's just kind of my, my gut feel about this right now.
Mr. Mayor, my, my thoughts on it are if we do have an interested party, to kind of agree on what things, if, if we're going to go to the table and talk with them, what things are kind of, what do we want out of this? Like this is a really good piece of property and this is like right next to City Hall. So what's our, what's our, we can't have 10 things, right? This, the original vision has a splash park, it has a dog park, it has outdoor restrooms, it has a, that's a long list of things. So I think the best thing we can do as a council is agree on what one thing or two or three, you know, are most important to us and, and taking into consideration the survey that was already done. So we can focus tie on coming to some sort of an agreement with the developer. And I agree with, with you, Mayor. I don't think we need to be in the business of, of developing this. I think we need to find the right partner that's willing to take that, that calculated risk based on what we see as the vision. And you know, things that worry me a little bit are the splash pad, pad. Um, and the dog park and just so many activities happening. And I, I think that that park does need to shrink down a little bit more to make it more usable for all the other things. And also the splash pad would kind of concern me in a way that it's taking away from our pool, which we have dead on. So that would be my question is, should we consider putting a splash pad or a water slide or something else at the pool? That makes it more of an attraction and not put the money into a separate piece of infrastructure that we have to maintain. That's just kind of my thoughts on it. The dog park, same thing. I love dogs, but I think there might be a better spot to put it. Than to cram it in here and make a developer work around it. So those, I just wanted those thoughts to be out there. But as a council, I think we just got to figure out what is the one thing we would want out of this besides just the property being developed? Because we have a good opportunity to have input if there is a interested party.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I was just going to add, I agree. I think people know probably my opinion on this at this point because I've talked about it for a long time. But I don't think we should be in the development business. We should entertain this proposal from the developer and understand if it's consistent with the vision that we have for the property and if it makes sense for the area. Whatever we put here is going to be at the front door of City Hall forever. And so I don't think we should be in a rush to take the first thing that comes to us. And we, at this point, we've sold all the land basically except this parcel. And so if, if we have to sit on it for a while, I don't know that we should be scared of hanging on to this parcel until the, the rest of the growth that we're experiencing in Bel Air. You know, is a little more developed. Right? We're having a lot of growth here. Lots of development happening. Our city is rapidly changing. We're about to go hopefully and update our master growth plan and study that a little bit more and get some more information about it. I think doing nothing with the parcel is an option, but we should thoroughly entertain the proposal that's before us. And continue to solicit proposals and solicit ideas and uh, take ones that are good if we get one.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I was going to ask, whenever we talk about this anchor and the park and you say they want a commitment. Is the commitment saying, hey, we're open to the park or they're looking for us to contribute some money to building the park?
So the, the idea, uh, when, when this came about, the way that I have been marking it in is that, because we had some previous developers that were interested and part of the, that was, if you build this, we'll buy this and develop it, but we want this to be the anchor. So you, you pay for that. And so that was in your packet, I think it was a $2 million project or whatever to build those types of things. And that cost estimate included, you know, some of the, um, the splash pad and things like that. And, and again, this was a large, I think this is like seven acres. So it was big. And then of course, the city would maintain that. So the, the, the benefits of the developer is that this is the anchor. This will draw people here and then they get to benefit from that. So um, understanding that, you know, previous proposals had where, okay, the city will build this, but only we'll invest as you invest. So if you build 5 million, then we'll put a million dollars in the park or whatever. The idea with the TIF is that we get the park, but we use tax dollars instead of actually the city bonding and paying for it. The other benefit is we get to use tax dollars from the county and the school district and stuff as well. So it's not just the city paying for it and putting our tax money. Everybody's paying for it.
Wouldn't you have to bond out to build the project and then reimburse it with the tax funds?
Yeah, but I, I guess maybe I didn't make myself clear. The, the, the positive is that the, all the taxing entities are helping pay for it, not just the city.
Okay.
I, I want to go to a specific thing here too. We keep talking about this survey. Everybody keeps saying citizens wanted. And I distinctly remember taking that survey. And what struck me really odd about it was there were no, I don't want this options on anything. So we're assuming people wanted this because they checked something on the survey when they didn't have an option to say, no, I don't want it. Ms. Hamburg.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I recall, it's been five years, but I think I took that survey too. And yeah, you didn't have an option to say, no, we don't, we don't need another, another park or to pay for it. And I'm also just not overwhelmed by the, by the percentages, even taking that into account. Another concern I had with the survey was we have over 8,000 people in, in town. And I think there were 220 responses. So that's, that's not a big slice. And then also a lot, a lot of things have changed in five years and um, tough times for a lot of people. So.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I was just going to add a comment on the survey. I, I don't recall it having costs either, which is an important element and, and folks making a decision. So it is a data point, but to everyone else's comments, I don't know that it's a good data point.
Well, we're representative government. So you know, the survey is to ask questions and you're the decision makers. And you can say that, that survey was worthless and we're not going to even consider that. Or it's like you said, it's a data point and it was something that you paid for or the council paid for. So it's.
Okay, I've, have never been against the park. I think it was overblown and had too many features in it. And the latest revision I saw of the park, my biggest concern, which I said at the time, was the amount of parking. So anything that we approve as a concept for the park, I think we need to make sure we have plenty of parking around it. Otherwise it is not a place for citizens to go. If we had lots of commercial development around it, we'd have parking lots. But if we do half residential, we're not going to have parking spots. So that's got to be a, a, an input into whatever we decide to buy, uh, build.
So did you have more you wanted to present?
Not on this. Um, I, you know, if you want to talk about how TIF district works and because um, the developer that's interested, like I said, sees the park as an anchor, doesn't look like this. That's a comment that I think some of you have made is they need to be a, a part of that. But then the other commitment is that in order for them to make it work, they want to use the TIF district and use those funds to make those investments. And not all of them will be for the park. I mean, some of it will be for water and sewer and streets and parking and things like that. The benefit of using a TIF is then, you know, that's tax dollars. So the city gets a say in, you know, where those funds are spent and how much are spent. So.
Ty, one quick question. Is there been any consideration to, could the community center that we've discussed really recently be a part of that side? And not necessarily tied directly to City Hall. I know the use of that will be, it sounded like, I know this is muddying the waters a lot. But I think I remember the use of that facility was going to be for court and for storm shelter. Is there any benefit to considering that as a part of the community space as an indoor/outdoor? Style space for the park or has that ever even come up or?
It hasn't come up. Um, that, that would be a discussion. The problem is I don't know how much that's costing. So I, you know, again, it would be difficult to go to the developer and say, we want you to build this great um, shelter. And it's going to be part of, you know, the, the whole development and the park. But I don't know what it's going to cost. And, and I'll get, when we, when we ready, when we're ready to switch gears, I'll kind of show you some dollars. There's not a lot. I mean, based on what he wants to build, um, there's, we don't have a lot, we don't have a hundred million to spend. It's more like 20 million to spend. So, or 10 million, depending on what the, the ratio of his investment to uh, the city's investment. So it could be that if, if that building is 5 million and the park's two, then he wouldn't get any benefit other than those two things being built. So.
The reason I asked is the city of Derby, I don't know if anybody's been down to their facility. One of their newer parks was built as a, a community center and a beautiful park. It's like Madison Park, I believe. And that's what I was envisioning as like, can we somehow make that the anchor instead of building a massive park and kill two birds with one stone? And maybe take advantage of a different sort of financing for that specific need. Just figured I'd throw that out.
What Derby has put in is nice. I, I agree there. I'm not sure that, that we're in a position that we would spend the kind of money they had to spend to do that. Derby is a class one, a class one city. So we're not, we're a class two.
Yep. Certainly appreciate that comment. It would be certainly smaller and scaled differently, but just a vision that somebody could look at if they wanted to.
I haven't heard any comments on my suggestion that we build the park on the same property here as City Hall. Is that a, a hard no from everybody or is that something you want to think about or?
My opinion on is that it, is that it kind of depends on what the development proposal looks like. My first concern is considering the proposal and it sounds like a park is part of the proposal. And so I think first we've got to figure out if that's a good idea. If the city is just going to go spend money on a park regardless of the developer proposal, that's when I think we should really look at that.
Okay. Cause one of my concerns is that it's the same argument I get into with my wife. We should have planted trees 20 years ago. Okay. So if we had an idea where we're going to do this, we ought to get some trees out there. So that they're mature by the time people want to use this place to get out of the sunshine.
You want to switch gears and talk a little bit about how a TIF works?
Everybody else ready to switch gears and understand TIFs?
Might help answer a few of your questions on, on projects and stuff. So like I said, the way it works is the city captures the difference um, between what the property taxes are today and what they are as it develops. That's 20 years. It does um, require the county and 259 to be involved. However, in the, in the legislation, the, there's a 20 mil set aside. I think it's for uh, building CIP for schools that can't be exempted. And then um, Sedgwick County Fire District is 18 mils. For the county to approve or be a partner in it, they wouldn't want that fire district money pulled out. So we couldn't do a hundred percent of all the mils. It would be everything except that, which we're at like a hundred and forty-some mils for all of them. So you'd subtract the 38 and the rest of those mils would go towards it. So the, the objectives, and these are out of state statutes, why they allow a TIF district, why it was created, was to encourage redevelopment or in this case, development of underutilized commercial usage. Uh, increase the property tax base, um, encourage additional private development, support economic development efforts. And facilitate development on a site that otherwise development has a little potential, which we talked about. It's been sitting for 20 years and there's no development. So that's the idea of why we would use a TIF on this. So again, uh, what is, and what can be utilized or what can be paid for under a TIF? Is there, this is the list, but for this specific property, sanitary and storm sewer lift station. So a water, sewer and storm water could all be paid for. Landscaping, lighting, paving, including parking lots. So that's where we talked about. You know, if we were going to require a certain number of parking area, that could be paid for it. Streets, um, drainage, plazas, parks and public gathering spaces. So all the things that we've talked about, that's what can be paid for with that TIF funds. And that's what it's meant to do. So um, project requirements in this policy, um, it's used as a final effort. So in other words, we've exhausted, and which we have, we've tried to get developers to come in. We've tried to get them to buy it, take it over, no, no luck. Possible, highest possible private financing. So in this policy, the ratio is three to one. So uh, the developer needs to put in $3 for every $1 that we'll put in. You know, you could, you can create that, whatever. That's the typical for most. TIF district is the three to one. Development agreements prepared.
Explain that ratio a little bit better. What is the three to one?
Yes, so.
Money in, we're putting money in.
So let's say we're, um, so let's say the park is a million dollars. Then we're not going to invest a million dollars in a park until he has committed to build $3 million worth of a commercial building.
Okay. Okay. So whatever the infrastructure that we're putting in, we pay one and they have to be investing three times that.
Yep.
In other things that are not infrastructure.
Right, exactly. The developer um, has to provide financial guarantees. Um, and it's not limited to, but assessment agreements, letters of credit, personal guarantees. Those are all things we're going to require and I'll get into those a little bit more detail. They, they have to demonstrate to our satisfaction that they can do the project, that they have the financial wherewithal, credit history. We're going to require some of those credit checks and stuff of the developers and investors. We're going to require some of those credit checks and stuff of the developers and investors. TIF proceeds used to pay for additional municipal facilities or public infrastructure. So again, it's going to be water, sewer main, it's going to be a park, those types of things. Here we've got it, we're comm- construction has to commence within a year. So we're not going to create a TIF district and let them have five years to do something. Uh, we want them to start immediately on the project. Let's see, oh, and then any developer controlled land will have deed restrictions to um. Which requires the city approval before they're going to sell it to somebody else. To make sure those people have the financial guarantees um, to cover these costs. Economic analysis, so we're going to require, perform a cash flow analysis on what all they're going to build, how they're going to. The cash flow they're going to get on that. He's got a um, accountant to help with that. Financial feasibility, so we'll have to look at all of those numbers to see. Will require uh, the Center for Economic Development, WSU does fiscal impact models. So we can run it through them to see how this plays out. Will have developer cash equity contributions should be at least fifteen percent. So he needs to have at least fifteen percent cash on hand to put towards this project. So uh, if it's a ten million dollars investment, he's got to have at least a million and a half in cash. We're going to require personal guarantees of a hundred percent of the annual debt service. So mayor, as you mentioned, if we go borrow money to do all this infrastructure. Then he's got to have a personal guarantee that the debt service is a hundred thousand a year, that he's got personal guarantees. That if not enough of the property taxes being brought in, that he'll cover it. The developer can't protest the value assessed unless it's above a hundred fifty percent increase. So we all are seeing our taxes go up because of the property values going up. Well, because this is the the property tax is what's paying for the TIF. He can't go in or she can't go in and and try to get their values lowered because that lowers the amount of property tax we're going to get. We can require a third park and market, a third third party um, market study. Again, the statute says that twenty years is max, we can't go over that. So uh, everything has to be paid for within twenty years. And then we'll do a background check on all the applicants and partners. Again, these are all requirements that we want to make sure, as you all said, who our partner is going to be, that they can financially do this thing. And the city's not going to be stuck for something. So there's two ways you can do it. Um, you, so you bond it out, um, pay as you go. And that is where um, the developer starts building buildings. The um, the uh, all those infrastructure costs are spread as special assessments, just like what we do in any subdivision. And then the um, and then the the um, property tax comes to the city. And let's say the special assessments are a hundred thousand a year. And they've only constructed a couple of buildings and a few houses, and so they're going to bring in fifty thousand. So the special assessments, the property owners are paying the special assessments. And then that fifty thousand that came in would then go back to the developer. And so technically what's happening is they're paying the whole bond and then they get back um, whatever we collect. So the other option is where um, the city uh, bonds it. We pay the annual debt service, so let's say it's a, you know, a hundred thousand a year to debt service, city pays that like we would any other bond. And then if we were to collect fifty thousand, well, then we didn't, we didn't bring in enough to pay the whole hundred. That's where those personal guarantees come in, where we go to the developer and say, well, because you didn't develop. Um, all of the, or didn't build all the buildings that you said you were, so the property tax didn't come in to pay for that, you got to make up the difference.
So you said the, on the first option, you pay as you go, that is all special assessed. We typically, we don't special assess parks. If you put a park in here, would that be part of the special assessment as well?
Yep. So all the, all the things that you would identify that's going to be paid for out of this TIF becomes a special assessment to all the properties in there. And again, you know, the developer is looking at what's, what's their financial benefit from this property tax. Well, in that situation, they're paying all the property tax plus the special assessment, so they have no benefit. Well, the benefit is, okay, we're going to bring in that property tax and we're going to give it back to you. But in that situation where we special assess and they pay everything, they may only get fifty thousand back because they didn't fulfill. What they said they were in their construction. So that, there's two ways to do it. It's going to be up to you and the developer to decide, okay, which way do we want to do this? What do they feel more comfortable doing? Um, so, but those are the two ways that you do it. So the process is, you know, the council would adopt a resolution, we'd hold a public hearing that we're going to create this. Um, have to create the boundaries of it, describe the district plan. So this is where the um, developer is going to come to you and say, this is everything I want to build. Um, this is the phases, I'm going to build the, this commercial building and twenty residential or whatever. Um, and that's the plan. And then yeah, after the public hearing, then the council can pass an ordinance um, that creates the proposed uh, district. And then has to go through the county and the school district for approval. Um, I can tell you that the county is the one that's going to scrutinize it the most. And as long as we would get approval from them, the school district will go along. So that's my understanding with all the TIF districts that Sedgwick County has done. They look for the county to do the due diligence, so whatever the county does, they do. So again, this is where it talks about the county and the school district can shoot it down if they're not comfortable with it. So not only do you have to be comfortable with it, then we have to present to the county and make sure they're comfortable with it. There's a fee, there's a non-refundable five thousand dollar fee to get the application started. And that covers our cost, staff cost of, you know, the time we're going to spend creating this. And then there's a deposit, which uh, ten thousand, which covers that and it's basically a draw. If we start spending, say we have to do a study at the CRB or CEDBR and it's five thousand. We can pull that money out of there and stuff, and then if it gets low, then we could ask for more. So again, we want to know uh, the history of each, each of the partners, who's invested in it, who's invested in it. What have they done in the past? Pro forma and cl- cash flows, we want to see all that, we want background checks. Make sure that they're um, they're, they've been paying their taxes. We want to see their IRS um, records. Financials of the company and partners, so that's key that they can afford it. Because the city's going to go on the hook for several million dollars, make sure that they have the capability and wherewithal. Financial backings, we're going to require that they have at least fifteen percent cash contributions in the bank. But they'll do letters of credit. The um, three to one ratio, so in this situation, the developer is going to invest thirty million, the city would put in ten million. That's where that ratio comes into play. So the question was, what, what IRB versus a TIF? So this is from the uh, developer side. So an IRB is a ten-year, hundred percent property tax abatement. So if the building's two million, they're going to save a hundred and nine thousand a year. It's only for ten years, that's all the IRB can be good for, so they're going to come out uh, one million ninety thousand ahead. So a TIF is for twenty years. They pay the property taxes, but they'll get two point one million benefit back over that twenty years. So it's double, their, in their um, benefit is double versus what it was on an IRB. So if there's a residential component, which he's talked about, maybe being a residential. They have no, IRB has no residential components, you can't get an IRB for a, a residence. But in a, in a TIF, that um, those taxes can go to help pay for the TIF. Where an IRB, you can't even utilize those residential pieces to it. The benefit on a residential side is because the TIF is going to help pay for the special assessments. Some of those residential pieces will have lower special assessments, which makes them more attractive. So that's the residential piece of it. So the questions as part of the policy is, you know, is the three to one ratio, the right ratio. Fifteen percent cash uh, requirement, um, hundred percent personal guarantees. And again, these are not things I made up, I've looked at other ti- like Wichita and Andover, the other cities that's got TIFs, this is what they're requiring. So I didn't just make these up. Application fees, um, and then, you know, any other comments or questions on the, the TIF. So in this situation, when I looked at the possibilities based on what they said, um, they would build, it came to about thirty million. If they built what they said they were going to build, there's some retail in there, it's commercial, there's some residential. So a three to one, we could spend, the city could spend ten million towards infrastructure. So doesn't pay for everything because you've got, you know, you all know what the cost of streets are and stormwater and all that. The park, if it's a two million dollar park, so now you got eight million you could spend towards parking, street lighting. So it's not going to pay for everything that they would like. But that's part of the pro forma, so you know, we're going to look at, this is how much we're willing to put towards this, ten million. If you invest thirty, we'll put ten towards it. Um, and then they have to look at, okay, you know, does that benefit? That ten million that we don't have to pay for now in special assessments, um, for the roads and the parking and those benefits. Can, how does that work with their pro forma on their rents and selling the land, selling the residential houses and things like that?
So we're assuming our infrastructure costs are more than ten million because you have a lot of things you got to do there, a lot of whistles and bells. Where's the extra money come from?
So what happens is the um, that's, they have to pay that. Those are, so what we would do is we would say, for example, we we pull out ten, two million for the park. And then we, the infrastructure, so the, there's going to be a retention pond, all the streets and everything is twenty million. But we say, okay, here, we'll put eight million towards that. The rest of it, you're going to have to pay. There'll be special assess, just like we would um, anything. His benefit is, or her benefit is that instead of paying the thirty million, they get. The city's going to reimburse them for eight million of that, so that's their benefit. And then they get their, their, like I said, the park is their anchor, they get that paid for.
Okay, and if they do a TIF, they cannot do an IRB, correct?
They can do an IRB, but there's no tax abatements. So if you remember, an IRB, you get two benefits, one is sales tax and then the other is property tax. So they could do an IRB and get that sales tax um, benefit. But no, there's no tax payments.
The sales tax had been, uh, benefit is only on the construction cost, right? It doesn't go on to retail businesses, they go in there, right?
Exactly.
So Wichita just closed one of their TIFs early, how did that work?
So um, so what happens is it's twenty years. And let's say we, we're going to invest ten million, so uh, that's, payments are five hundred thousand a year. And let's say that the developer um, puts in the thirty million. And because of the value of the property, um, and the fact that they um, maybe built more. Of commercial than residential, um, more tax revenue came in, so they paid it off early. So instead of, let's say, you know, well, we said a half a million a year, let's say all of a sudden they started making five hundred and fifty thousand a year. Then they paid it off early, maybe, you know, fifteen years or something, that's how they did it.
So when the initial bonds are paid off, the TIF ends. And at that point, then all the taxes go to everybody that's the school boards, this county, everybody gets their share again.
Right.
Does sales tax in any way come into play there?
No, so on a TIF, the set, no sales tax uh, is included in the TIF. Now, what you can do is you can overlay a CID, Community Improvement District. And a Community Improvement District utilizes sales tax up to two, two cents. So if there is a retail component, you could still do a CID. And and then put an extra two cents on your retail. And that could bring in an additional five thousand or twenty thousand, depending on what it is they're selling. So that's a component you could add. So the, so the question is tonight, is are you comfortable with this, with a TIF district? Are you comfortable with the policy? Because I've heard from the develop, the potential developer. That he would like to enter into some type of agreement where he has this land under contract. Because some of those requirements, he has to spend money to do that, to do the pro forma and stuff. So he's getting ready to spend money to do that and he wants to make sure he has that land under contract. And so the hinge is, you know, that you're good with the TIF. You're good, you know, we're going to adopt in a policy um, for the TIF, you're good using the, utilizing the TIF for his development. And the land bank's ready to agree to put it under contract so that he can move forward.
Okay, you probably said this, but I've forgotten. The money for the TIF would come from all the property or only commercial property that was built in that district?
All of it.
So the houses, everybody. I guess I'm all right with it.
Ju- just to make sure I understand that correctly, what you said. If you exceed the amount of the TIF investment, because it doesn't go up. Once you establish whatever the value is, it stays flat for twenty years, right? The, 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 in, the tax income on the tip, right?
No, it, it, it changes every year.
Oh, it does.
It'll change from development. So what we'll do is we'll, so, so we issue a bond. And you know how we can set the bond so that maybe the, we can do all level payments? Or we could say the first year, we're going to do a hundred thousand and last year it's nine hundred thousand. So what, what we look at in that pro forma is, so the first year, he's going to build twenty houses and one commercial. And that's going to bring in a hundred thousand. So then we feel comfortable that, okay, he's going to bring in a hundred thousand, that'll pay that hundred thousand. When it's all developed, it'll bring in a million, so that'll cover that nine hundred thousand. But, so he may be, the first year he builds one commercial and twenty residential. Next year, he may only build twenty residential. So it's going to go up because he built twenty more houses, not going to go up a lot because he's not adding commercial.
So it only goes up if he builds more, the hundred thousand on the first year stays a hundred thousand for twenty years.
I don't think that's right.
No?
No.
If, if the value of the property, the value of the improvement goes up, he's going to pay more taxes because the value of the improvement went up.
Saying earlier that it didn't, so that's why I'm asking for the clarification.
Yeah, so, so the, the base is, is zero. Because it, we're, we're not collecting any tax. And so he builds a million dollars worth of property and he pays a hundred thousand in taxes. The next year, two things could happen, the next year he could build another half a million. So now he's paying one point five million in property taxes. And that original one million that he sent, spent the first year, the value may have gone up to one point one million.
So there's a higher tax value each year. Mr. Mayor. Thank you, I thought you said earlier, maybe I confused something in it. But I thought you said earlier that initially, there's a flat number for twenty years, it's paid.
So it would be the infrastructure cost. So when you, you're going to commit, you know, so he's going to say, you know, he's going to have, come up with this plan. And I'm going to do all these things over the next twenty years and I'm going to invest this amount of money. And then you're going to say, okay, based on a three to one, when this is all said and done, you're investing thirty million, we'll put in ten. That's it, we're not going to put in anymore.
Okay, and that's ten million that's. And that's ten million that's flat over the twenty years. Okay. All right. That's what I was confusing. So I want to make sure I understood what, what it was going on there. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
So at the beginning, we, he will establish the value of the project and we will go likely issue a bond for the total amount. And so that bond amount probably can't change if he decides, oh no, I'm actually going to spend fifty million in this area instead of the thirty, we can't up the bond from ten to a third of fifty. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then as part of that bond offering, we establish the repayment schedule.
Yep.
Which drives how much taxes need to be collected.
And now, now they can't, you know, they can come back and, um, uh, make amendments. So in that situation, like you said, he could come back and say, in year five and say, oh, well, boy, the commercial just took off. We're not going to be leaving more residential, we're going to add ten million in commercial. We're going to say, okay, well, we agreed to pay ten million for infrastructure, that's all we're doing. Um, and he may say, well, can you, what if we, you know, I'd like to do a new entrance with a waterfall and everything. And that's, we, you could, you know, we could include that. You could say, okay, well, you're going to bring in another hundred, you know, hundred thousand because of this new change, this new commercial. The waterfall's fifty thousand, so, okay, we'll go ahead and approve the waterfall for fifty and then we'll use the other fifty to pay off the bonds early or something. Again, they, they can come in and request changes based on just what you said, Justin. Um, and, but it's up to you to decide, okay, do we accept that? Do we want to incur any more or help them any more with the development or not? We just want to pay the bonds off early?
I'll just be honest, um, I don't, I don't care for any of the alphabet soup of economic incentive developments, um, IRBs, TIFs, CIDs, EDXs. But like two weeks ago, I can get, I can get drug along on IRBs because I know they're, they're pretty much required and because we're a conduit. However, when we're putting taxpayers on the hook, uh, that's a bridge too far for me. And I appreciate the guardrails with personal guarantees and things like that. It's also a longer time horizon, twenty years. Developers have a lot of vision, but developers go bankrupt and, um, yeah, I don't think I could support a TIF policy almost ever. And just to be clear, we have never done a TIF in the city of Bel Air, right?
No.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Just for clarity, the personal guarantee, is that, uh, just the developer guaranteeing it? Or do we require like a bank letter of credit for that guarantee? I know we do that for some projects where it would be the bank that was on the line if the developer went bankrupt. And that's what usually gets me a lot more comfortable with those types of things. What, what would that look like here?
Yeah. Personal guarantee would be a, from a bank.
Okay.
That they would personally guarantee that this person could provide that.
Okay.
Yep. Not just a letter from them saying, I personally guarantee it. No, that doesn't work.
I just wanted to understand exactly what personal guarantee meant because I agree with Councilmember Hamburg's sentiment there and that I don't want to put the taxpayers at risk. But I think that if the TIF policy is crafted appropriately and if we're modeling it off of other cities who have done it really well, and we have mitigating controls, you know, the right amount of insurance and banks on the line instead of people on the line, we could do this in a way that takes advantage of the alphabet soup that probably shouldn't exist. Um, but it does, and therefore we have to, we have to live with that, uh, and, and do so safely. So that's kind of my thought on it.
Can we get a twenty-year personal guarantee from a bank or do they renew on some?
They renew. Yeah. They're required. So, uh, because we do that now with, uh, letters of credit. So, um, the bank will contact us and say, okay, we've got a letter of credit on this developer for special assessments. And we say, uh, it has to be renewed because they haven't met the criteria for that to go away. So, yep.
So if they do go bankrupt though, the bank's not going to guarantee them.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, there, you know, with, with, uh, this isn't like an IRB. So, um, you're right. I mean, there, you, we're, we're going to do everything we can to mitigate that. But just like special assessments in, you know, in developments, we've had that where developer went bankrupt and we had to cover the special assessments. So that's basically what this is, is, you know, there's, worst case is we'd have to cover special assessments.
Can you clarify, what happens if the developer goes bankrupt and we have a letter of credit?
Um, so if a developer goes bankrupt and we have a, let's say a thirty-five percent letter of credit, that's all we can, can pull on.
Oh, so you, you pulled the thirty-five percent?
Yep.
Okay.
And then when that money's gone.
Guarantee was out there.
Then it's gone.
Okay.
Um, so your goal is that you, that that thirty-five percent will cover two or three years so that you'd have a new developer come in and take over. That's your goal. Um, but doesn't always happen that way.
So limit your risk, but it doesn't eliminate it.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to point out two things. So one, one of the points made in the policy that's, as written, is maximum term shall be twenty years. So is there any benefit and would developers find it beneficial if that was, I'm trying to understand how they would compare IRB and TIF. If you made the TIF a ten-year and made it more comparable to the IRB, is there still a benefit to them over an IRB? Or is it actually better to go IRB at that point?
So, yeah, for them.
Right.
Uh, for the developer, it would be, if you went ten years, they would be better off with an IRB.
Okay.
Because then that just, they're the ones going to build the commercial because the residential they're going to sell. Um, so, um, so for them, they're probably going to build the commercial and lease it.
Sure.
And so they would, they would rather do the IRB.
I'm just trying to sift through this and see like what's the, is there really a benefit to having TIF? It sounds like there is, we might not agree that it exists. But, and the other key point on here was developer shall be able to demonstrate a market demand of the project. TIF shall not be used to support purely speculative projects. So I think if we supported this, I think we'd have to get really, um, specific about who's the, who's the person that makes that call. And I think it's spelled out, talks about the Center for Economic Development, all the research that'd be done. So I think, you know, having those things in there is important for me to feel comfortable with voting for it, for the policy. My, my question is, is there any additional language that's not in here that you saw that you, that we could review and potentially add in? Or is this kind of an exhaustive list of what you, what research you had done?
Yeah. I pulled out everything that I thought would protect us, um, from all the ones that I saw, um, and the higher amounts and things like that.
Got it. Thank you.
It's, you know, it's like what we talk about with competition is, you know, there's other communities that do TIFs. And, you know, these, the people that are working on this, they're doing development and other TIFs.
Right.
And so that's why they're interested in this. Um, and so we want to be able to compete with the other TIF projects and have them come to Bel Air instead of Andover or downtown Wichita. Um, so we got to stay competitive. We can't require more than they would anywhere else. So, yeah, it's a, it's, it's a challenge.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
If you were to do one of these TIF projects and you were to do the ten million dollars in bonds for the public infrastructure and part of that might be a park or whatever, would you have to go build all the infrastructure right up front? Or would you be able to, uh, kind of build it along with the developer, building the structures that would fund that infrastructure with taxes such that if somebody went bankrupt, you just pay back the bonds with the money that you haven't spent yet?
Yeah. And that's a good point because I, I, our goal would be to do like we do any development and phase it because we know they're going to phase it too. Um, so with, but with, with all developments that may be in this size, they may have to do all the grading. And so that's all one thing that gets done at once. But certainly we may not put all the streets in, all the sewer and water mains in and stuff because we're just going to serve their phase. So, yes, I think that's something that we work on.
I was just going to throw two more things in about the Center for Economic Development in terms of accountability. Their, their analysis comes from the application that the developer fills out, correct? So it's, it's a little bit circular to me. Um, and then second of all, the...
Would we, hold on, would we pull, would we request it?
Uh, let, let Ms. Hamburg finish.
Sorry.
Um, and then again, I, I'm concerned about the fairness, you know? I know we say, you know, we're capturing, the base is zero and we're capturing this new, um, tax income. However, you know, other developers have to pay in full for their infrastructure. So that, that's just another concern I had. Thank you.
Mr. Dean.
Oh, sorry. I apologize. The, the thing I was curious is, is can we require, or have you seen in the research, whether it's a city? Basically, we include in our fees the cost of that and then we are the client, we are requesting that information as a part of the client, not letting the developer be the client of, of the economic research so we can kind of control that. I know, I totally agree with Emily. I think how we handle that could be important, who they're working for. Are they working for the city in the city's best interests? Or are they working for the developer in the developer's best interests? I don't know if that's been done both, both ways or...
Uh, well, so technically they would, we would hire them. And that's where that, that money comes from.
Gotcha.
I think where Emily's going is that we're going to rely on them to provide us their numbers and how accurate are they?
Right.
I think, um, so, yeah. I mean, that, that is, that with, um, IRBs and stuff like that, they give us the numbers and then the WSU runs those and comes up with their formulas. The other thing that I think helps, will help us feel better is the fact that it's got to go through the county, the county's got to approve it. So you're going to look through all those numbers and say, you're comfortable. But then the county is going to go through it as well. And I like that because I think that gives us a little bit more comfortable, um, situation that's not just us, because this is our, this is our first one too. And we're going to, you know, hopefully have everything that, all of our bases covered. But then to have the county look at it and say, well, what about this? Or we think we ought to look at this. I think that would help and it would make me feel better too, to have another set of eyes, another taxing entity look it over and tell us their thoughts.
Well, if I understand, it sounds like there's a consensus to let's move forward with these two concepts and see if we can't put something together that, uh, will be a win-win for So I have questions to answer, but we won't know those questions until we see some numbers and some proposals, right? Very good. Okay. So we're at the point to adjourn unless there's some other discussion. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Welch and second by Mr. David. Nobody ever wants to discuss this, so we'll just go to a vote. All payers say aye?
Aye.
Go the same sign. We are adjourned. See you Friday night.